Good evening. Could I have everyone's attention? Everyone be seated. I'd like to welcome everyone to our Henry County Board of Commissioners meeting for November 16, 2021. I'd like to call Chaplain Hines up. And then also, I would... Before we have our invocation, I would like for us to prepare for moments of silence for our officer decide that we lost in the line of duty. Could we have his picture put up? Moment of silence, please. Thank you, Chaplain. If you would begin our invocation.
Well, good evening. Grateful to be here tonight, and I just want to tell each and every one of you, I love you and appreciate you, and I am thankful for our county. My heart was broken when Officer Desai was taken. And I'm going to pray in a moment and ask God's blessings on his family and all the departments. But since we're coming up on Thanksgiving, I want to give a thought with you before I leave to not only think about the tragedies, but the triumphs. Because a lot of good things have happened, and a lot of good things are happening. And take time to appreciate those that you love and those that love you, and be thankful for them. Let's pray together. Our Father in Heaven, Lord, we come together, Lord, meeting in this governmental building this evening. Yes, there's business to do, Lord. There's discussions to be had and things to be worked out. But right now, Lord, as our hearts remain heavy over the senseless killing of Officer Desai. Lord, I ask God blessing tonight upon his dear wife, the children, the family. Lord, in the lonely evenings when they realize day by day that he is not coming back. I ask your blessings, Lord, upon all the officers that knew him and loved him, all those that labored in the vineyard, Lord, to protect us and to serve us as citizens of this county. Oh, God, build a shield of protection around them. Give them wisdom, give them insight, give them thy almighty protection. And Lord, I lift up the firefighters, those on the rescue today, those that go out and about, those that dealt with that tragic incident, not only that, but, Lord, the day-to-day grind and the drudgery. Lord, may you encourage their hearts, may you give them wisdom as they care for the citizens of this wonderful county. May we purpose tonight, Lord, to, through all of the things we've experienced, the setbacks, and, Lord, yes, the heartbreak. May we look to thee with a thankful spirit. Lord, may we have an attitude of gratitude for who you are. I thank you, Lord, for the privilege of being used of thee. Bless the commissioners, bless the department heads, all the top administration, all the way down to the soldiers in the field. We need you, Lord, and we commit our county to you. Bless this meeting, lead in the decisions, and, Lord, may we be mindful to put not only thee first, but people. God, may we see people as you do. Help us. Bless this time we ask in Jesus' name. Amen. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call our meeting to order. The following planning and zoning items were advertised for November 16th Board of Commissioners meeting but have been postponed by the applicant. In this public hearing, RZ 21-14, the Reservoir Group LLC of Madison, Georgia, requests a rezoning for C2 to RS for property located on Bridges Road west of Willow Lane. This particular zoning matter has been postponed. Also, public hearing, RZ 21-22, Builders Professional Group LLC of Fayetteville, requests a rezoning of R2 to R3 for property located at 3539 Jonesboro Road. This item has also been postponed. So if there are any individuals that are here for either one of those zoning matters, it will not be heard today. We will have a financial update from David Smith, our Financial Services... Oh, before David comes up, I'd like to call Stephanie, our county clerk, to come up to read a proclamation. I'm sorry, Stephanie.
Good evening, Board, Chair members. I would like to read a proclamation honoring the life and legacy of Officer Parmhan Desai October 5, 1983 to November 8, 2021. Whereas Henry County Police Officer Parmhan Desai, badge number 7951, was born in Billimora, India in 1983, and moved with his family to the United States at a young age, becoming a United States citizen in Ohio in 1977. Whereas from an early age, he knew his calling was to serve and protect as a police officer and to help those in need. And whereas in 2008, he married the love of his life, Ankeeta, and together they have two wonderful sons, Om and Name. He was a devoted husband and father and loved his family, community, friends, and his colleagues. Whereas Parmhan's moved to Georgia where he began his law enforcement career in 2004, having served in various public safety roles in Spalding County, Clayton County, the Georgia Public Defenders Council, and with the DeKalb County Police Department before joining the Henry County Police Department. Whereas during his nearly two decades in public service, he held a variety of leadership roles requiring responsibility, integrity, and commitment, earning a well-deserved reputation for being an outstanding leader in his division and an asset to Henry County law enforcement. And whereas for his colleagues, Officer Desai was not just an outstanding public safety professional, but an intelligent, kind, and compassionate human being who continues to serve others with the gift of life through organ donation, where his legacy will live on for several other families. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Henry County Board of Commissioners extends their sincerest condolences to the family of Officer Parmhan Desai and honor him for his commitment, dedication, and sacrifice in serving the citizens of Henry County, and he will forever be in our hearts and in the hearts of those he served. Henry County Board of Commissioners, signed by Chair Harrell. Thank you.
Thank you. So Stephanie. One or other item of business is that... Stephanie, do you have the... I'm sorry, David, before you get started. The declaration?
Sorry, I forgot we were doing this next. This is an order rescinding the declaration of state of local emergency. Whereas on August 3, 2021, in pursuant to authority vested in the chair of Henry County Board of Commissioners, and in response to the resurgence of the Delta variant of COVID-19 virus, I issued a declaration of state of local emergency for Henry County. Whereas on August 17, 2021, in pursuant to authority vested in the chair of the Henry County Board of Commissioners, and in response to the resurgence of the Delta variant, she issued an order clarifying the declaration. On September 21, 2021, as a result of the continued resurgence and rapid spread, we extended the declaration of state of local emergency until December 1, 2021. Whereas due to the current trend of reduced positive COVID-19 cases provided by local and state health officials, she is now rescinding the declaration of state of local emergency effective November 17, 2021, as conditions remain stable. However, this is a fluid situation, and we will continue to monitor these statistics and will act accordingly. The mask mandate will be lifted, and wearing face coverings will be optional. Now therefore, pursuant to the authority vested in the chair of the Board of Commissioners by local and state law, we do hereby rescind the declaration of state of local emergency effective November 17, 2021, signed by Chair Harrell.
Thank you, Stephanie. David, now you can come forward.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners and the Henry County community. I just wanted to make certain, and I'll endeavor to be brief because of the extent of tonight's agenda, to give a financial update for our first quarter. I'll start with the ARPA funding, or the American Rescue Plan funding, where we were allocated $45 million. We've already received approximately $22.7 million of that amount, with the second installment to be received sometime next year in May 2022. I want to remind the Commission that we have to obligate these funds by December 31, 2024, and expend them by December 31, 2026. Next meeting, the plan is to present you... We've been receiving requests not only from the community through our community survey, but also from departments and the community itself with their requests for how to spend these funds, and we plan on presenting you that proposal for you all to make a decision so we can move forward with it. So let's talk about our financials for the first quarter. Year-to-date revenues are $20.4 million or 11% of our budgeted revenue. I want to remind everyone that through September, we had not yet collected our property taxes, but 85% of our property taxes has been collected as of this morning, and we're on pace to collect about 90% by the end of the month. Year-to-date revenues compared to prior year are $1 million higher, primarily due to increased licenses and permits and charges for services. Our year-to-date expenditures at $44 million account for 23% of budgeted expenditures. At this time, we had anticipated being at 25% of budgeted expenditures, but departments have been expending below the expected year-to-date pace. The next few slides are really just the financials and how they look. I really want to point to the $23.6 million year-to-date, which shows that we utilize fund balance at least nine months out of the year until we collect our property taxes. That's what we're doing there. The next few slides are graphical representations of year-to-date actual versus year-to-date budget, where you see we're trending well. These next slides are month-to-month, month-over-month, same period last year, where we've spent $2.5 million, worse, year-over-year. That's because our revenue, even though we picked up more revenue, we did expand at a greater pace than we did in prior year, primarily in public safety. This is a graphical representation of that. Let's talk about SPOLOX collections to date. $67.1 million, and our SPOLOX expenditures are at $11.5 million. Our expenditures continue to trend below, but we did begin to spend more in the July-August timeframe. You'll see on this graphical representation where we had planned revenue, where we continued to exceed planned revenue, except for the months of July and August, and expenditures began to pick up during that time. There's been a lot of questions about impact fees, so I wanted to address that. Currently, we have about $3.4 million available in impact fees that have been collected, the majority being in parks and recreation, $3 million. Revenue received year-to-date is $885,000, with Parks and Recs, as you can see from here, represents 89% of that amount. We are moving forward with the impact fee study, which was presented at a workshop. That includes a transportation impact fee and maybe a potential fee increase. That recommendation is going to be presented to the Board as well. What questions you have for me?
Do any Commissioners have any questions? David, can you make sure that you email this packet to all the Commissioners?
I will email the President, have it emailed to all of the Commissioners. Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Thomas.
I wonder if your presentation includes COVID dollars that we receive, or it does not include the COVID dollars that we receive in different amounts?
This does not include the COVID dollars that we've received.
Can we please get some...
That's just the general fund dollars that we're accounting for.
Can we please get a presentation on how we have used our COVID funds as well internally, purchases that were made as well through the different phases, so that we can also see how those dollars are being used?
Yes, ma'am, but I just want to make this statement that we have not utilized any of the ARPA funds as of yet. That's going to come before you.
Absolutely. I'm talking about, you know, when we first started, I think we reserved like 40% dollars for internal use and what we needed to do for the county.
Yes, ma'am.
And then in phase two, we reserved a certain amount for the county as well, but we've not tracked that. And I know you have.
I will have a presentation ready for that as well.
Thank you. That's what I want to hear.
So David, will you have that presentation for our next meeting on November 30?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions? Commissioner Holmes?
The increase in impact fees. Can you discuss the calculations? How do you plan to calculate an increase of impact fees on commercial property?
So that is my peer, Tucson Kirk's area of expertise in how they plan to calculate it.
Is that going to be calculated on a percentage or a flat fee? You know?
Tucson, can you come forward?
Good evening. So as of right now, it's based off of square footage, but I do have the consultant working on providing some information as far as commercial and industrial buildings. So we'll try to have it for you by the end of the week.
Appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Thomas.
One other thing, David, and maybe it's up there and I just didn't see it. The unassigned dollars in your general fund, where are we with that?
So we presented, and it has to be reviewed to the county manager, and analysis of our fund balance to date. We're doing very well in our fund balance, and we just have to determine, and coming before you, I guess before, by the next meeting, will be a discussion on how to utilize that amount.
So you will make a presentation on how to use the unassigned dollars?
Yes, ma'am.
So we need to get our requests into you by what date and time?
So in terms of the presentation to the county manager...
Sheriff, can you come forward?
Please.
But my plan is to have something ready by the 30th, in terms of the presentation itself.
Good evening, Commissioner Thomas. So we are actually in the middle of our mid-year adjustments as we speak. Our financial team has been working with all of the departments on identifying any additional expenses that they will need beyond what the budget was approved for. So the Commissioners should have received, or if you haven't received, we'll make sure that you all receive it. I think it did go to maybe Ms. Weaver in terms of what your budgets look like. So if there are requests, the time is now for us to get those requests. What we're looking at is any requests beyond what you've already asked for in the current fiscal year budget. And one of the things that we've told the departments is this is not a time to up their budget amount, but for example, if there were expenses that we had not budgeted for that may have hit their budget, now we're going to try to adjust those budgets. Again, it is all based on collections, and as you can see from David's presentation, we are trending well, but we still definitely want to make sure that we're not overspending, and so we've done a great job at that. So to answer your question, if you have specific requests, they need to be submitted to us fairly quickly, because David and his team are actually working through this week. They're taking a break next week because of the holiday, and the following week, and then they'll be making a presentation to me on what those requests are.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
As we move to the consent agenda, there are two items that I am going to move from the consent agenda. The item under Parks and Recs will be moved to the regular agenda, as well as the item under Stormwater, on the resolution approving on-call engineering will be moved to the regular agenda. If I can have the county manager come and present the consent agenda minus those two items.
Good evening again, Madam Chair and members of the Board. Your consent agenda for Tuesday, November 16. Under the county attorney, we have a resolution to authorize the acquisition of 173.87 square feet of right-of-way, 2,171.91 square feet of permanent easement, more or less, in Land Lot 130 of the 12th District, Henry County, Georgia, be negotiated or by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to provisions of OCGA Section 32-3-4 through Section 32-3-19, Rockaway Road widening, parcel number 49. We also have a resolution to authorize the acquisition of 82,092.32 square feet of right-of-way, more or less, in Land Lot 13 of the 6th District, by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to provisions of OCGA Section 32-3-4 through Section 32-3-19, Rockaway Road widening, parcel number 13. And then we have a resolution to authorize the acquisition of 4,517.11 square feet of right-of-way, 6,474.95 square feet of permanent easement, more or less, in Land Lots 4 and 29 of this 12th District, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to provisions of OCGA Section 32-3-4 through Section 32-3-19, Rockaway Road widening, parcel number 28. Under the Department of Transportation, we have a resolution awarding a bid number 22-14 for pavement marking services to Midstate Striping, Inc., in the estimated annual amount of services of $304,554. Under E911, we have a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners approving the renewal of the L3 Harris radio system maintenance agreement for December 11, 2021 through December 10, 2022, at a cost of $75,486 to be paid from the Public Safety Communications Repair and Maintenance Account. Under the Fire Department, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners authorizing Henry County to enter into a mutual aid agreement with Ameripro EMS LLC. And we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners authorizing Henry County to enter into an automated mutual aid agreement with Butts County, Georgia. Under Human Resources, we have a resolution for approval and adoption of the Henry County Government Personnel Policy. Under the Police Department, we have a resolution accepting a grant award to the Henry County Police Department for the Edward Bryne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, JAG, local program in the amount of $26,174 for the digital vehicle electronic technology. We also have a resolution declaring Henry County Police Department K-9 Bootar as surplus property. Under planning and zoning, we have three streetlight districts, one being a resolution approving a request for the creation of a new streetlight district for Heritage Point, Phase 1 subdivision, located on Dutch Town Road. We have a resolution approving a request for the creation of a new streetlight district for the gates at Pates Creek subdivision, located on Jonesboro Road, District 2. And then we have a resolution approving a request for the creation of a new streetlight district for the Riviera at East Lake subdivision, located on East Lake Road, District 4. Under the Sheriff's Office, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners approving the acceptance of an accreditation award grant to get Henry County Sheriff's Office accredited in the amount of $74,175 from the COPS Office Community Policing Development. Under SPOLOX, we have a resolution awarding the bid for construction of a temporary signal for Lester Mill Road at Bill Gardner Parkway to Reedwick LLC in the amount of $69,327. And we have a resolution approving the purchase of 27 fitness stations from Ready Fitness for the Heritage Senior Center Fitness Room addition in the amount of $85,255,08 through NCPA Contract Number 08-23 using SPOLOX 5 funds. Under Stormwater, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners approving the bid to award the Dickerson Group, Inc., for the construction of Beaver Run Trace Storm Drainage Replacement in the amount of $91,485 located in District 3. And then under Transit, we have FTAG.5311-FY23 Grant Application for Rural Public Transportation Operating and Capital Assistance. Henry County's total amount of operating allocation for this program is $1,371,946, of which $685,973 is the 50% federal portion, and the local portion of 50% is also $685,973. The capital allocation for this program is $919,67174, of which $735,000... of which seven thirty-five seven thirty-seven thirty-four is the eighty percent federal portion, ninety-one thousand nine sixty-seven twenty is the ten percent state portion, and the local match portion of ten percent is also ninety-one thousand nine sixty-seven twenty. This ends the consent agenda.
Thank you. I got a motion to approve consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Any squa- any questions? Commissioner Thomas?
On the transportation, where you just read about these dollars, you said the capital tool allocation is nine hundred and nineteen thousand, is that from us plus the nineteen thousand, or just the nineteen, not nineteen, ninety-one thousand?
So the total amount is nine nineteen, and the county's portion would be ninety-one thousand nine sixty-seven twenty.
If that's the total amount for the county?
Yes, ma'am, the county's local match is only ten percent of the nine nineteen six seventy-one seventy-four.
Okay, thank you, and the next question is Chair Harrell on the human resources for the resolution for the personnel policies, I would like to see that moved to the regular agenda.
And the reason? Cause we've had many discussions on this, and emails have been sent out with no responses from commissioners. I just do believe that we should have a vote on that. People have read it even if they didn't respond by email, but I think it requires a vote, not a consent. Any additional questions?
Thank you.
You have a motion and a second. No further discussion, all in favor? All opposed? Motion fails. Okay, we'll move to our regular agenda.
Um, Chair Harrell?
Yes.
There was not a motion to proceed with the consent agenda, so until we can get a motion on that, we can't move forward unless all these items are now gonna go on the regular agenda.
Uh, Commissioner Clemens, I'm sorry.
Chair Harrell, I would like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with moving the human resources to the regular agenda so that we can move forward.
So we have a motion?
Seconds.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? So Sherri, are we able to-
Okay, so there were three items that were moved to the regular agenda, would you like to hear those items first, or where will they fall on the agenda?
Okay, then, so we're going to put the personnel policy at the end. What I would like to do is discuss the item under stormwater, the resolution RFQ twenty-one dash ninety-three for on-call engineering design services for the stormwater management department to the following five consultants, so if we could, if we could address that.
Okay, I'll have Mr. Alex Mahajer come up and present that, and then it'll be followed by the resolution regarding the train, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, you have a question? This agenda item is a resolution approving RFQ number twenty-one dash ninety-three for on-call engineering services for stormwater management department to the following five consultants. American Engineers, Atlas Technical Consultants, Heath and Lineback, Pond and Company, and Prime Engineering. These five were selected from the pool of twelve consultants that have applied for this RFQ.
Are there any questions? Commissioner Holmes, go ahead.
Alex, we, um, we talk about supporting local, local vendors all the time on this board, and we have one engineering firm in this county, and it's a little peculiar why that firm didn't make this list.
Yes, sir. As I mentioned-
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear what you said, Miss-
No, just saying, I was wondering why that firm didn't make this list, we have one engineering firm, if we had multiple firms, I can see why that firm, you know, I can see you, you know, rating on, on whatever metrics you are, you're rating them on, but if we have one firm, one local firm in this county that does engineering, they should be on this list.
Yes, sir, if I may explain, as I mentioned before, the pool of engineering firms that have applied for this RFQ was twelve, and we had a selection committee, we went through a process of looking at all RFPs, and we met and discussed, and we shortlisted five consulting firms, and the firm that you are referring to, you know, was not selected. So I have the scoring sheet here, if you would like, I can-
Can we put the scoring sheet up so it can be seen? Okay, then, so can you read those different firms that put in a bid for, and what the score of each one, what the total score of each one was?
Yes, ma'am, let me get my second column. Well, the column all the way to the, to the right is the total, and as I've mentioned before, American Engineers, their score was four twenty. Atlas Technical, it was four twenty-seven point five. Heath and Lineback, it was four sixty-three point five. Pond and Company, it was four thirty-one point five. And Prime Engineering, it was four oh nine point two five. And the consultant in question, I presume, the score was three forty-six, which by looking at this, end up to be last.
Another question, this company has been doing business for, for us for many years, I have not ever heard any complaints regarding this company, so, you know, all of a sudden, after years of doing business with this county, they scored last and they beat out many of these other vendors in past years. It just makes me think that, it just makes me think that, you know, something, something isn't right. So what I would like to do is, I wanna ask if the chair would allow the CEO from that company to, to explain to the board why he thinks he was scored so low on this evaluation?
I don't, I don't think that is appropriate to do. I guess basically, that the, how were you made aware that the company had not been approved? Were you contacted by them with regards to this? And I guess, what, what is our policy on this with regards to, we put out an RFQ, vendors put in, and then you guys score?
Yes, ma'am.
So why is it that this company, if they've done work for us before, why is their score low?
Well, I have been with Henry County for approximately nineteen months, and I did not know the, I know many firms, I've been doing engineering for forty years, with the government for thirty years, and, but I never had the privilege to get to know this particular company. And during my tenure with Henry County, I have experienced, in my opinion, some deficiencies that in good faith, I could not score him in my area higher than what I did, and if I'm asked, I'm not recommending this company to do work on Henry County behalf because of the certain things that I've witnessed.
Okay, and so what was the committee made, how many people were on the committee that, you had different people that provided scoring sheets?
You can talk about the number on the committee, but not the committee name.
Yeah, right, if you observe, is, is the five, the members of five committee members on the top row, and each of them represent one person which sat from that particular department.
Okay, all right, Commissioner Holmes and then Commissioner Wilson.
So in this particular case, I would like to make a suggestion that we allow everybody to bid, not just these select firms. You know, I'm not sure if you have a past relationship with many of these firms or not, but, you know, we like to support our local companies in Henry County, and they should always be included on any bidding opportunities that we, that we put forward.
Yes, sir, as a professional engineer, I have an oath to serve my field as, as well as Henry County. And with all due respect, yes, I've been an engineer forty years, I've been designing for forty years, thirty years with the government, as a court expert, as a professional engineer, undergraduate, graduate work with Georgia Tech, and postgraduate. And I know many of these firms, I never had any relationship with them, and I will never have a relationship, I know better, however, when it comes to this particular firm, in my opinion, I'm totally against that.
This firm employs probably about sixty or seventy people in this county.
I understand.
So we, we wanna make sure that we're supporting local business here.
Yes, sir, but at the same time, when it comes to engineering, this is something that we deal with people's lives, we deal with good practicing engineers, and in my purview, for whatever accounts, I'm, I'm against that, if possible.
County manager, have we ever had any complaints about Falcon Design?
So I will say this, Commissioner Holmes, we have not had any complaints from the public. This bid was, or this was based on qualifications, and so there are instances in which staff has made me aware of some concerns on some particular subdivisions, in which work was completed by that respective firm, and because it's based on qualifications, one of the things that staff does evaluate is past work experience and how they work, but to answer your question, though, there has not been any complaints from the citizens regarding this company.
Commissioner Wilson?
So a couple uses about that SPOS, but you had to decide- Same top scoring system, and we hired the top six. So it, y'all use the same scoring system as the SPOS program uses?
Commissioner, you're, you're referring to SPOS?
Yes, they put out ones a year or so ago, and they hired the top six. Is your scoring system the same as the SPOS, that's what I'm asking?
I'm not sure if, I'm not familiar with the scoring system that SPOS uses.
Yeah, but if we, if we using, if we trying to hire the same engineering firms, shouldn't we use the same system on both sides, stormwater and SPOS, use the same scoring system?
Yes, sir, in, in general-
So do we hire the top six in SPOS? So-
So if I, let, let me speak to that, because if you'll recall, Commissioner, and if you'll recall, when we were awarding the contract for the on-call engineering services, this firm was not selected. And, and the board elected to allow this firm to be added over other firms, and so when staff evaluated initially for SPOS, they were not selected as one of the on-call firms.
But I think they scored number six.
I think they were number seven, yes, sir, and we selected the top five.
And how many was in that scoring at that time?
We did the top five, but then we extended it because of questions to the top seven.
But I guess my question is, are we using the same scoring system in stormwater that we're doing SPOS? Are we using the same scoring system?
It's the same scoring system, Commissioner, but the people that do the scoring are different. So the, your evaluators could be different, they're not always the same personnel.
Okay, thank you. It, it sounds like Alex made a decision based on his own personal opinion, he said it was his experience, but when this particular company won the bid, they won most of the bids for the county and actually saved the county almost a half a million dollars with the work that they did here, and there has been no complaints from citizens or any member of this Board of Commissioners with respect to this company, and it just, it just seems like, it just seems like, you know, you know, he's been in business for a long time, so I'm pretty sure he either worked for a lot of these firms, or he has relationships with them, and I, I just have a feeling that a lot of these firms was picked because of past relationships.
So Commissioner Holmes, I wanna make sure, because, understand that there is a panel that, that scores, and if you look specifically, and I, we'll look at Falcons specifically, we had five members of our team that reviewed their proposal. The DOT representative rated them at a sixty-eight, the SPOS one representative rated them at a seventy-nine, the SPOS two representative rated them at a eighty, and then there was another member of stormwater at seventy-nine, and then stormwater and DOT at forty, and so there are, each firm was evaluated by all five, and, and I hear you, while-
With all due respect, we know how these panels work.
I'm, I didn't hear you.
With all due respect, we know how these panels can work.
You don't have the-
I'm just saying, we know how this works, so-
I don't know what that means, Commissioner.
We do not know how the panels work, Commissioner, and I do not appreciate the inference that there's something going on that's not appropriate.
Don't take, don't take it personal, I mean, I've been here for a long time, I've seen a lot, so.
So I think, Commissioner, we, if, if you'd like, staff is prepared to discuss those issues as it pertains to this firm, but out of respect for the firm, I certainly don't wanna do anything that's gonna jeopardize them, but I will tell you this, staff has a list of subdivisions in which there have been issues identified, which we can put up on the overhead if you like.
But there was never any complaints before, and this company has been around a very long time, I haven't heard any complaints.
So I think, Commissioner, from a complaint standpoint, you're not gonna hear it from the citizens, you're gonna hear more from our engineering staff.
I haven't, I haven't- So my suggestion is just open it up, instead of picking eleven, twelve companies, open it up for everybody to bid, so we can ensure that our, our local people, our local businesses can bid on, on-
So two things, understand that this group will continue to have work through the county. I think as Commissioner Wilson has indicated, they are one of our on-call engineers for our SPOS program, this does not disqualify them from bidding on any other projects here in the county, if there's, we have a host of projects that are getting ready to hit the ground running, that they are able to bid on and/or submit an RFQ if it calls for that. If the board elects to not go with staff's recommendation, they won't have to close this out, and what I would suggest at that point is that we solicit bids, because the whole point of doing the on-call engineering is so that we can hurry up and expedite some of these projects and not have to wait to go through a full fifteen proposals for a bid. Typically on an on-call services, the top five are the ones that submit the bids, and then based on the lowest bid, we select from that vendor, but if the wishes of the board is to throw this out, then my recommendation would be, well, we have to close this out, and then we would do a solicitation for each project, which will slow things down, but, but certainly I want to respect the wishes of the board as it pertains to, to firms being selected.
That we, as to Commissioner Wilson's point, this company is already on for stormwater as on-call, that we just add them and take the vote so that we don't have to take this down and start all back over again? If we could just add them like we did on the stormwater to the list, so it'll be six people instead of five, then it's a fair process of them bidding on it?
So it's, I'm concerned about that only because there are other vendors that scored higher, and so that puts us in a bad position.
Okay.
Nor do we want to be seen as favorite, favoring any particular vendor, whether they be local or not.
Are there any other discussions? Any other recommendations?
I think, um...
Okay, Commissioner Clemens, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just to David's point, since he spoke last about, we don't want to be looking at anybody, favoring anybody. I agree. But also, we don't want to look as if we're discriminating against anybody. Because there's been, emphasis made about, you know, this, this score forty from Stormwater and DOT. And I don't know who that person was that scored the forty. And I don't care to know. I don't think that's something that we need to deal with. But by the same token, we don't want to look as if we're discriminating against a local vendor because of a personal preference of an employee as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, I, I see that we have two options here. Either we're going to go with the recommendation of staff, or either we are going, well, actually, three recommendations. Either we're going to go with the recommendation of staff. We're going to include all individuals that's on the vendor list. Or we're going to throw it out and, and bid it out individually. Those are the three options. So, someone make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we include all the vendors, including Falcon Design.
So, I have a motion by Commissioner Holmes that we include all the vendors that are on the list. Okay, and Commissioner Clemens second that motion. Okay, if there's no further discussion, all in favor. Okay, okay, wait a minute. Okay, so, Commissioner Wilson, what was your question?
So, I wanted to, I wanted Commissioner Holmes to state what his...
Okay, so, Commissioner Holmes, can you state the motion, please?
Yes, I would like to include all the engineering firms on the list, including Falcon Design.
So, it, it, the motion should be that you are including all vendors that are on the list. Okay, but I, I, you need to make the motion.
So, I'll make a motion to approve the list that includes Falcon Design as a firm that can bid on Stormwater projects in Henry County.
Commissioner Wilson.
So, if we do that, I guess I might have to go back to, what, what's that going to cause? What kind of problems that going to cause?
That just means you're, you really don't have on-call engineering. You are now bidding out every project, every vendor. And so, what that means is, in lieu of our staff reviewing five bid packages, once we put it out, if we get twenty, we'll get twenty. And, and again, there is no guarantee that that vendor will be selected because it's based on the lowest bid.
So, that's going to slow down the process of getting the, the work done.
In, in my opinion, yes, sir. But I want to caution against the, yes.
That doesn't mean that it's open to everybody. That's not the motion. Doesn't mean it's open to twenty. This is not twenty on this list.
No, it's not twenty on the list.
That's right. The motion was just the ones on this list. So, instead of five or instead of seven, it's ten. It's the same, it's three more than what we have with SPOSS. It's not twenty. And it's not anybody. It's only the ones that's on this list.
It's twelve.
Okay. So, the motion was for everybody that's on this list. And, you know, we pay staff to do the work. So, to say the staff is going to have more work with twelve, I mean, there are some bids that go out when they, staff might have forty or fifty. This is just twelve.
Understand, but I also understand that we get requests from commissioners consistently, when are we getting these projects moving? And so, that was one of the reasons, many years ago, we brought forth the on-call engineering so that we could start moving a number of the projects. It's not a matter of staff reviewing them, because we're going to review them anyway. But I hate to call it on-call engineering, because it's no longer that. What we're saying is that every person that submitted a proposal now will be eligible to submit a bid. And so, it's just a choice of words. But certainly, if, if the intent is for us to award it, then the motion needs to be to award it to all. And we cannot call out Falcon Design.
If we have a second or not?
Okay, Commissioner Holmes, do, do you want to?
Yeah, I've already made the motion.
And I'm second.
Okay. So, is, there's a motion on the floor to include all of the vendors that are on the vendor list, which is twelve vendors here. Commissioner Clemens has, is that twelve? Commissioner Clemens, is that correct?
That is, that is twelve, Chair.
Okay. Twelve vendors that are on the list. Commissioner Clemens has seconded that motion. If there is no further discussion, Commissioner Wilson, you, you got some further discussion?
No, ma'am, I'm good.
Okay. Because you, you got your pen up. So, I just want to make sure that there's no further discussion. All in favor of the, including the entire list, raise your hand. All opposed? We got one opposed, Commissioner Clemens opposed. I mean, Commissioner Cannon, I'm sorry. I'm getting the Cs mixed up. Excuse me, Commissioner Clemens.
Contract for on-call engineering design services to all twelve vendors.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, so, Sheriff, we're going to have to make a, an adjustment in the agenda. I need to have Patrick to come forward and do his presentation, because he has another appointment. So, we need to, to hear his presentation and then we'll do the train.
Good evening and thank you, Chair, for taking me out of order. I apologize that this is one of those nights where I'm due in multiple places. So, thank you for consideration. And thank you, Ms. Patel, for being here in my place. As you are all aware, one of the things that happens after the decennial census comes out is that we then, we in government then enter into that thing called redistricting and reapportionment. Before I walk through this presentation, redistricting is what we are doing. Reapportionment is sort of on the federal level where they reapportion how many, how many representatives each state sends to the, to the United States House of Representatives. We don't do reapportionment, we do redistricting, which is where we reconsider whether or not we are required or should redraw the district lines in which each one of you serve. And I'm going to walk through just generally redistricting as it applies statewide. And then I'll talk specifically about Henry County. And then we'll provide you with some options for today. There is a statute in Georgia that has been around for less than ten years. It was adopted after the two thousand and ten redistricting. And it was adopted, I think, in an effort to try to put some order into the redistricting process. I'm going to jump a little bit about out of order. Redistricting is done by the General Assembly. The General Assembly makes the decision, the final, ultimate decision about where your district lines are. This statute, OCGA twenty-eight dash one dash fourteen point one, sets forth the manner in which you, as elected members of the Board of Commissioners, can involve yourselves in that process. Redistricting is accomplished by local acts of the legislature or local bills. Before any local bill, creating a district or modifying a district can be presented to and approved by the General Assembly. It must follow the following requirements. There must be a plan, and that plan is typically a map. In fact, it's almost always a map. And that plan must either be drawn by the staff of the Legislative and Congressional Reapportionment Office. That is an office staffed by probably twenty or thirty people, works for the General Assembly. They work at the building across the street from the State Capitol. And what they do is draw maps. So, that, your map, the districting plan must have either been drawn by them or, if it's drawn by anyone else, must be approved by them. It must be cert, submitted to and certified by the Legislative and Congressional Reapportionment Office. So, some jurisdictions draw their own districting plan, their maps, and they submit that map to the reapportionment office. That reapportionment office then reviews the map and either approves it or sends it back to the local government and tells them to do it again. So, those are your two options. You either allow a reapportionment office to draw it on your behalf or you, and, and when I say you, I mean a consensus of you. You must agree on what that map says, because you must vote on it, approve it, and send it up to them for review. If the plan is drawn by the reapportionment office, then you must ask the General Assembly, a member of your local legislation at the General Assembly, to sponsor the county and authorize them to work on it for you. That's the, there's another sort of, there's another option I'll get to in a minute beyond these two. Secondly, if the draw, if the map is drawn by anyone other than the reapportionment office, for instance, if you draw your own map or hire a consultant to draw the map, then the county must, again, submit that plan to the reapportionment office for review prior to voting to accept the plan. And a member of the local delegation, your local legislative delegation, must sponsor that plan. You must convince one of your members of your local delegation to sponsor that plan as it is his plan. To get approval from the reapportionment office, there's some statutory requirements that that plan must meet. First, you must satisfy all requirements of the federal and state constitutions. I'm not going to make any effort to list all of the requirements of the federal and state constitutions. You probably generally know them. They can't be discriminatory. They can't target any racial minority, religious or gendered group. You know, they have to be fair maps. The map must also meet the requirements of the Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five. Now, that used to require that the maps be submitted to the Justice Department for preclearance approval. That is no longer required. And what the Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five basically says is it must be a constitutional map. It cannot be based on race. It cannot be based on religion. It cannot be based on gender or any other, any of the other statutory or constitutional ways that we are not authorized to divide people up. The plan should, these aren't mandatory. These are things that the plan should do or should not do. The first thing the plan should do is it should avoid dividing current voting precincts in a manner that could compromise voter anonymity. Now, what that is, this is where your, your district lines and your voting precincts get a little bit different. And essentially, what this requirement, this voter anonymity requirement says is, you can't carve out five people that vote in, at the Methodist Church, and they're the only five people that vote in District Seven. Because you can figure out who those individual voters are. Voting in the United States is supposed to be anonymous. We're not supposed to draw maps, so I know who voted and how they voted. So, you have to make sure that you're not leaving such a small number of people voting for a specific thing in a voting district. And believe it or not, that happens. That happens a lot of times when you're drawing maps, if your maps, because typically, you don't redraw your districts at the same time you redraw your voting precincts. There's usually a gap before that happens. One of the next requirements is you have to avoid leaving any geographic unassigned areas. Every inch of real property within Henry County needs to be in one of your five districts. You can't leave a gap of someone who's not represented. And lastly, it is your, one of your goals is to maintain continuous geographic features. Basically, you, you want the lines to make sense. You want where lines to make sense. You want them divided by a road, by a river, by a creek, by a street. You don't want to, you, you want, you know, you don't want lines just to divide up next-door neighbors in a subdivision. That doesn't make much sense. I want to remind you that redistricting is a legislative function. And when I say legislative, I mean it is a function that belongs to the General Assembly. You can go through all of this work and the General Assembly can adopt whatever map the General Assembly deems just and appropriate. And your power in that is limited to the same power every other resident in Georgia has, which is to try to influence the General Assembly to do something or not to do something. But there is a way by which you can participate in an official way, which is what we're talking about today. These are some redistricting principles that have come directly from the reapportionment office at the state. And I, what I actually did was to avoid any risk that I changed them or modified them. These are screenshots from documents that they produce. So, general redistricting principles require compliance, again, with the United States and state constitution, compliance with the Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five, requirements with the Equal Protection Clause of the Fourteenth Amendment, which is everybody should be treated equally. And ultimately boils down to the one-person-one-vote principle. That's really what your, your overarching goal when you draw district maps. There are some other traditional redistricting principles. And there are times when you cannot achieve all of these redistricting principles, but you should make every effort. Whoever's drawing a map should make every effort to protect each one of these five things. Compaceness. The idea with compactness is that districts should be relatively together. You don't want, you know, you don't want a district that looks like my hand. It's got a bunch of people living here and then some big, long finger stretching out for it. These people up here, they're just not compact with the people down here. So, you want that to be relatively compact. You, you should satisfy the contiguity requirement, which means every portion of the district must touch every other portion of the district. You can't have District Six here and here. It's got to be fully contiguous within one bubble. You should respect political boundaries. This is one of those that in Henry County, it's, it's, it's just impossible to do. You should try to line up your districts, your county commission districts, with your municipal boundaries if you can. That's really what that boils down to. And I, I'm not a map drawer, but I don't know how you could possibly achieve that goal in Henry County with the way the cities have become like our hands. The city, your cities in this county are not compact. And I don't know how you could, I don't know how you could make those correspond. The next thing you try to do is protect what are called communities of interest. That's a tough one to identify, but there are areas where everybody that lives in that same area, maybe it's not a municipality, maybe it's not a city, but they generally share the same interests, the same problems, the same concerns. You have those all over Henry County. You've got the Ellenwood area. As a general rule, you probably want to keep the Ellenwood area in one district. You've got Ola, as a general rule, you probably don't want to cut Ola in half. Kellytown, I could name, I could name communities all over. I, I don't want to name any to the offense of any I don't name. But the idea is you, you want to find areas that share common interests and try not to chop them up. In smaller, geographically smaller places, like cities that have city districts, sometimes that community of interest are people that go to the same church. Sometimes that community of interest might be people that go to the same school. You know, it's just whatever community shares a common interest. You don't want to, you don't want to disperse those people. And one of the last goals of redistricting is incumbent protection. And what that essentially means is, map drawers start, one of their opening principles is they try not to district out an office holder. And those are the five general redistricting principles as created and as published by the reapportionment office. So, let's get to Henry County a little bit. And all of this information I give you is Henry County-specific. But if you think about it from that earlier bit of information, you know, it may help inform what happens next. In two thousand and ten, the total population in Henry County was two hundred, three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two pursuant to the two thousand and ten census. One of the overarching goals, it isn't really listed anywhere before, but it's one of those that ought to be self-evident, is that the goal is each district have the same population. You don't want the Commissioner in District Twelve representing forty-five thousand people, the Commissioner in District Seventeen representing two hundred people. That's not one, one-person-one-vote. That's, I don't know what that is. It's not one-person-one-vote. So, in two thousand and ten, the ideal population in each county commission district was forty thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four. And here's how the population districts were divided when the two thousand, when your current map was drawn. District One had forty thousand, four fifty-six. District Two had forty-one, one fifty-three, forty thousand, seven oh eight, four, forty thousand, three sixty-four, and Five, forty-one thousand, two forty-four. You had a deviation of one point, one three percent or less. That's a really good map as far as population district goes. There's no, there's no number above, there's no, you know, number that's automatically bad or automatically good. The lower that, the lower that maximum deviation is, the better you are. And one point, one three is really good. So, with that in mind, we shift over to two thousand and twenty. According to the two thousand and twenty census, the total population in Henry County is two hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred and twelve, which means in Henry County, the ideal district has forty-eight thousand, one hundred and forty-two. If it were possible, and I'll tell you right now, it's not possible, but if it were possible, each one of your districts would contain exactly forty-eight thousand, one hundred and forty-two people according to the two thousand and twenty census. You will never achieve that exact number. And I'll, I'll talk briefly about that in just a second, about why. If you were to take today's district maps and today's two thousand and twenty census number, this screen reflects the population in each of your districts pursuant to the two thousand and twenty district. reflects the population in each of your districts pursuant to the 2020 district. And as you'll see, District One, 47,572. District Two, 53,666. Three, 52,274. Forty-four, 160. And five, 43,043. There's going to be some work to do. District One is awfully close to the ideal number. District Two is going to lose some ground. District Two is going to shrink because there's too many voters in District Two as compared to the ideal number. District Three is going to shrink. Likewise, there are too many members, too many people in District Two as compared to the 48,000 number. Districts Four and Districts Five will probably gain some ground in order to gain population. That's how redistricting works. You will not get down to the one person, because again, think back to those principles, things like communities of interest, natural geographic boundaries. You're not going to say, well, we're 22 people short, so I'm going to pick that house, that house, that house, and that house. That's not how you do it. Your county is divided up into census blocks. And what redistricting people and mapping people do is they pick that census block up and drag it to different districts to see how close you can get those numbers to work. And you likewise don't want to pull one individual out of a neighborhood. You don't want to pick one house in a neighborhood, and that person's in one district, and all those neighbors are in another district. So as a general rule, as a general idea, Districts Two and Three are probably going to become smaller geographically so that some of their population can be shifted primarily into Districts Four and Five. But you can't adjust just one district without probably adjusting all of those districts. I don't care who draws the map. Anybody who redraws the Henry County district map is going to redraw every district. There's just no way around that. This is what the district looks like today. So if you sort of think back to this number, you imagine Districts Two and Three, which District Two is huge already because it had a relatively low density of population. It's going to become smaller because it's become much more populated. It's going to become a more dense district than it was in 2010. District Three is going to become a little bit smaller because it needs to move, move some people into some other districts. One, Four, and Five will likewise adjust. Now, sometimes there's an easy way to do this. Sometimes, maybe you take, you take the boundary line along Highway 20 and move it down south a little bit or something. Sometimes there's an easy way to do it. But, but our population, in the context of redistricting, our numbers are pretty big. Those two districts that need to shed 4,000 to 5,000 people, that's a big number in the redistricting world. I do, I would predict for you that any map drawer that tackles this problem, the map's not going to look a whole lot like this map. It's just going to look differently. And that's just a guess. I've not seen any maps. I don't do maps. I, but I'm, my guess is it's going to get a little bit complicated to redraw these districts. So next steps. I just fed you with a lot of information. I will send this to each of you. You'll have it. The next steps are these. You can adopt the proposed resolution I've got, that I've submitted to you. What that proposed resolution does is it directs the county to request a member or to request its legislative delegation to authorize the reapportionment office to work with the county. And it also designates the county manager, and I put the county manager in there in a vacuum because I didn't know who else to put it in there. Feel free to change it if you wish. But you want a contact person. You want the reapportionment office to have a person it works with to funnel information, questions, concerns, drafts back and forth if you elect, to participate, if you elect to insert yourself with the redist, with the, with the reapportionment office. In order to do that, you must come to a consensus. You must all agree. If, if three of you want to work with the reapportionment office and three of you don't, you won't work with the reapportionment office. It, it takes the board as a whole to do that. If you're unable to agree to work with the, with the reapportionment office, what you're doing by default is you're going to just let the General Assembly handle the process. I'm not saying that's a good thing or a bad thing, but it will, it will remove you as a body, as a board, from being part of that process. So if you do not adopt a resolution today, chances are what's going to happen is the reapportionment office is going to work on that map without your involvement. You may see it, you may not, but there'll be no requirement that you see it. And that's where I am. Any questions for you, for me?
Commissioner Clemens.
Patrick, the resolution that I saw was giving the General Assembly complete control to do this instead of the board. Did you change the resolution?
No, that, what that resolution says is they draw it, but you participate in it. So it will, it says at the very end, it says requesting the legislative delegation not to introduce support or vote on any map that's not been approved by this board. That's one of the final paragraphs in that resolution.
I would like you to put the paragraph up.
I will do so. I'll have to do it through the screen.
And, and let me say, I think that, since the chair has given me the floor, I think it is the right thing for this board to do is to work together and work with the reapportionment office and to present something as a board so that the General Assembly can, can adopt it instead of us not having a voice and representing the county that we were elected to represent. So I want to say that I think that's the best way to do it and not just turn it over to legislators. But I want to see it because I did not understand that paragraph to read that.
Yeah, I'm going to walk through. I'm not going to go through all the whereas. I'm going to go through what this resolution proposes. Number one, or A, that the legislative delegation request the reapportionment office to work on a plan for Henry County. B, that the legislative delegation direct the reapportionment office to communicate with the county manager in the creation of the redistricting plan, and the Board of Commissioners designates the county manager as its liaison. I'm sorry, county manager, but I don't, I didn't know who else to put in there. It's, it's up to you. Put whoever you wish in there.
Yeah, but it doesn't say to work with the board.
Hang on.
Okay.
C, that the legislative delegation refrain from introducing or supporting any local redistricting plan for Henry County unless and until it has been approved by the Board of Commissioners of Henry County. And the last one is that after the Board of Commissioners, upon approval by the Board of Commissioners of a local redistricting plan, the legislative delegation introduce and support a revision of the county charter to adopt and reflect that local district, that local redistricting plan. I will say this, even if you adopt this, the, the General Assembly still has complete power to do what it wishes. So, but this would be the best way to get you in the ballgame.
This doesn't make much sense. I remember a number of years ago, and we did this before, we worked together, and then we approved the new maps that, that were generated by the Board of Commissioners as well as the General Assembly.
Right. And that's what, this will, this will achieve the same goal.
But this seems like we're going backwards. Why don't we just do it the same way we did it 10 years ago?
Well, you hired a consultant 10 years ago. And if you'd like to hire a consultant, you can do that, but what will happen, look, the, the people at the reapportionment office are just like a lot of professionals. I can send them the perfect map. They're going to find a reason to, they're going to find a reason to object to it.
I, I rather go that route.
I would suggest, number one, I don't know of any consultants still in the business of map drawing. We'll find one if that's what the board wants to do. But be prepared to end up probably with the same map because you're going to have, what you're going to be doing is drawing maps, sending them to the reapportionment office, and they're going to say yes or no and send it back. And I expect you'll get a lot of notes from them because that's what they do.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
But if, if the board wishes to hire a consultant, we'll certainly go out in the marketplace and see if there's a consultant that can help you draw that map.
So Patrick, I'm, I'm fine with that as, as important as this is. I mean, I think that we need discussions, we need presentations. We haven't had any of that. You're just bringing a resolution and asking us to, to, to approve it and, and, and take all opinions from this board out of the mix.
Well, here's how it'll happen. If you, if you approve this, if you approve this resolution, what would happen is the, the reapportionment office will draw a map, and they would send it to your designated liaison, whoever that is. Hear me out. They would send it to Sherry, and they would say, present this to your Board of Commissioners and get back with us with any issues or concerns. That's how, that's how that office does it when you participate. If you don't participate, they'll just draw the map, and the only, the legislators will be in the, in the only ones in the room. I will tell you, I'm doing this, I'm doing this in other jurisdictions.
Can't we talk to them, I mean, can't, can't we have a conversation with them without a resolution? Are you saying we need a resolution to talk to the reapportionment office?
Yes. You need, well, you don't need a resolution. You need, the reapportionment office will likely not discuss this with you unless a member of the local legislative delegation tells them to discuss this with you.
Correct.
And the only way I know to get a member of the local legislative delegation to do that is for you to vote and make that request. They probably will not communicate directly with you unless someone on the delegation asks, asks them to do that.
Commissioner Thomas.
My question, Patrick, on our notation here, is that last paragraph, I mean, that last line, has it been deleted? Where it says to authorize the local legislative delegation and county agents to make such actions necessary to change the charter and for other purposes. Is that "and for other purposes" been deleted out of your resolution?
Hold, hold, hold.
Has that been modified or changed?
I, I don't, I have, I don't think I've ever seen, I, this is the only draft of the resolution I've ever created. I don't know what language you're referring to. The one I've got.
I'm reading from the agenda.
Okay. Well, that's your resolution. Your, the resolution, so the, the heading in your resolution always, almost always has that "for other purposes" if I write it, because there's a rule, a law in Georgia that says the purpose of your resolution must be in the heading. And by including "or for other purposes," it gives me enough room if you decide to do something else to include that. But the resol, but that, that heading doesn't, isn't the authorization. The authorization is this language, is this language down here that says, upon approval, upon approval by the Board of Commissioners of a local redistricting plan, the legislative delegation introduce and support a revision to the county's charter to adopt and reflect such local redistricting plan in the new commission districts created thereby, period. There is no other purposes.
So that line is not there? And I'm sorry, I can't get my internet up to follow with you. So if you tell me that that line is not a part of this.
That's correct.
That changes things.
Right. There are four, there are these four things, I won't go through them again, but these four things, A, B, C, and D are the universe of what your resolution will do.
Thank you.
Since we don't have that one, please go ahead.
I think you do have that one. I, I think.
Come, come back. Well, first of all, I don't have any internet up here, so.
I don't either.
If what you're referring to is this up here in the heading, this "and for other purposes," that's, I hate to criticize my own language. That's kind of throwaway language. It really has no meaning.
Well, it should be taken out.
Well, I'm, we can take it out. I'm happy, well, happy to scratch that. Yeah, if you'd like to, happy to scratch it. But it's not, that "for other purposes" is not contained anywhere else in the resolution.
So you're saying to us that we have to do the resolution in order to speak to this committee, and a letter would not do that.
I'm saying the best way to ensure that you can speak. I can't speak for the people at the reapportionment office. I don't know if they will accept a call from you, me, Sherry, or anyone else. But I can tell you, with this resolution, the likelihood that they will do so is dramatically increased.
Commissioner Clemens.
Patrick, on the, a resolution, that top line that you have there, can you add in it as approved by the Board of Commissioners? I know that it's in the whereas, but I would like for it to be in the top.
In the title?
Yes, absolutely. So I would like to see that changed. And then if you go scroll up again on this, and so we got a few changes. I would like to see if we, I mean, is this time sensitive? Because I would like to see these changes in writing because.
I can do them right now if you walk through them.
No, I mean, is it time sensitive? Because we had an issue before where Commissioner Holmes had a resolution, and it was changed. So this is very, very important, especially since District Two will lose over 13,000 voters, and you got 13,000 constituents in District Two that will get a new commissioner, and they will be placed wherever. I think this is important, that we take our time, not rush through this tonight, make sure that it gives us an opportunity to read thoroughly through this. I think this is rushed. It's not the same resolution that I've been reading. It's not the understanding that I had.
Yeah. Well, I'll, I'll tell you that this is the only resolution that my office presented and distributed. If you're seeing another one, it came, came from somewhere I couldn't tell you.
For the sake of time, Patrick, for the sake of time, I agree with Commissioner Clemens. So we're going to table this for tonight and bring it back on the 30th. And please send it out to the Commissioners prior to the 30th so they can have the opportunity to review it and reach out to you if they have any additional questions or concerns before it comes back.
Yeah, and I can tell you, as far as timing goes, you know, everything's time sensitive, but between now and the end of the year, probably not. The legislature is not going to take up this redistricting plan during, they're in session right now doing statewide redistricting, and they, that will be ugly enough. They are not going to deal with local redistricting. That will happen in the.
In January.
January. And you, and now, once January comes, you, you don't want to be dilly-dallying if you want to be involved. You want to get involved because that's, I mean, the session will last till March or April, but those 40 days pass quickly. And I would be willing to bet that, that redistricting office is drawing hundreds and hundreds of versions of the statewide redistricting map, the State House and Senate districts. They don't want to be bothered with us right now, so.
Yes.
Patrick said a couple of things. He said that it wasn't time sensitive, and he also said that unless the preapportionment found a reason, they, they would find a reason to object to whatever this board comes up with, they can't find a reason to object if we go by the law. And there are some specific things that we have to use in order to do this. And it's very clear. We understand that District Two is going to lose 13,000 people. But this board can decide how that happens. It can decide if it's on the lower part of 20 and they go into District One, or if it's on, on Jonesboro Road and everybody in Jones, Georgetown go to, cross the bridge over in McDonough. So this board should have that opportunity. I think this is a time that this board should come together and decide that. So November 30th, Chair Harrell, is the week after Thanksgiving. That really doesn't give us enough time considering the holidays are coming up. So I don't think November 30th.
You're not going to produce a map between now and November 30th.
No, we're talking about this resolution. She said you bring it back on the 30th.
But I think this resolution can be prepared in such, because really what this resolution boils down to is just saying to your delegation, we want to be involved. And I think the earlier you say that, the better.
Right.
And I do think, well, it's not time sensitive for today. I think the longer you wait, the less likelihood you will be able to get involved in a meaningful way, because, look, this is no secret to anybody. The ugliest political thing that happens in this country is redistricting. The sooner and more involved you can get involved in it, the better. The longer you wait, the less, the, the chances increase that there's a runaway map that you can't bring under control.
Yeah, we're not, I'm not expecting it so long, but November 30th is a holiday.
Is there a possibility that you or the county manager could contact somebody from the reapportionment office and give the Board of Commissioners a presentation so we can ask questions?
I will certainly, I, I know the people in the reapportionment office. Whether I can get them to come and do a presentation is a different creature, simply because they're up there drawing all these maps right now. I have a presentation that they have prepared. I can send that.
We would like to talk to them directly.
Sure. I, I'll reach out and see. I'll, I mean, I'll reach out and see.
Executive session issue?
No. No, it would have to be in public. Yeah, I'm happy to reach out and see if any of them, if the director will send somebody down to make a presentation, so.
The manager's meeting, there was a contact, so I'll reach out to that person as well while Patrick reaches on his end and see if we can jointly get someone down to do a presentation.
The director's name is Gina Wright, and she is a very good map drawer. And my recollection is that she may live, if not in Henry County, close to Henry County. So I will reach out to Ms. Wright. That's probably who y'all heard from at the managers. I'm happy to reach out to her and see. We'll invite her down and let her hear from you. Anything else?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next item that was moved from the agenda was the resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners declaring the train, farm silo, and the old road scraper at 101 Lake Darrow, McDonough, Georgia as surplus. Have our cluster leader, Jonathan Penn, come forth and do a presentation. Stephanie, how, uh, do we have people sign up for co, uh, public comment with regards to this?
Yes, we had four people total.
I can't hear you.
Sorry. We had four people total sign up for public comment, Gretchen Conis, Don Dunlap, Arlo Prater, and Robert Kolpeck, and they were all wishing to speak on this item.
Okay, do we have any other, uh, and, and this all with regards to this particular item on the agenda?
Yes, ma'am, no one else signed up.
No one else has signed up for public comment other than that, um, so we're gonna do it a little bit different today. Um, Jonathan, I'm gonna let you go ahead and do the presentation, we're going to hear public comment, and then, uh, we will, um, go from there.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board of Commissioners, residents of Henry County. Um, today you have, you have before you a resolution of Henry County Board of Commissioners declaring the train, silo, and old road scraper at one-on-one Lake Dow Road, McDonough, Georgia, Heritage Park as surplus. These three items have been, have been identified as items that should be surplus, which means they would go to purchasing for, to put out to bid, or, um, for someone to purchase, um, and to bid on. Um, this doesn't mean necessarily that we would destroy these items, I just wanted to make that clear. The items have been identified by our risk department to have some risk factor. And so, with that being said, we felt like we should surplus these items, as well as, as we continue to, um, revitalize the park, in that area, it would be best to move those items. We are in the process of creating a concept plan for revi, revitalization improvements of that park in that area. And so, staff is recommending that we remove those items, and I can have, um, Ms.
Can we talk about, you said that there are some risk factors, can, um, someone kind of explain to me what that means?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, I'm Holly LaFontaine, the Director of Risk Management for the county. And, um, Mr. Penn and I and facilities and Parks and Rec have been out to that site a number of times. There's a good bit of safety issues surrounding the train, some of the old buildings out there. There used to be some farm equipment that was not secured, so we had to move it because children were climbing on it, had a couple of reports of injuries. Uh, as risk management, our job is to prevent, we don't like paying claims, we don't like people getting hurt. And I do have a lot of fears about the train and some of the buildings at that location.
Okay, so, and you said that there's been some injuries reported, can you?
From, from years, nothing, nothing serious, nothing major, and I don't have any from the actual train itself, but on the farm equipment that we did have removed about two years ago, there were some minor injuries with some children cra, just crawling around, playing on it. And I'm just fearful that that would happen too at the train, because we have had reports that kids get in there, they play around, we've had a lot of vandalism in that area.
So, the, the buildings that are on that site, what are the buildings that you were talking about surplus, and what is the purpose of them? And, I guess, is there any historical, uh, documents, uh, because we as commissioners have probably received tons of emails regarding this, and so, um, what historical, uh, value are, you know, that do they have?
I, I don't know that, I want to share my personal opinions on the historical value, um, as the risk director, I don't know what the historical value of the train is, my concern is the safety of it being at that park. And I know that Parks and Rec and Mr. Penn have some improvement plans and thought, you know, that would better benefit the folks that would probably use that park. If, if the equipment is kept, then it, we need to secure in a different manner.
Okay, so Jonathan, can you speak a little bit with regards to each of, it's, it's three, it sounds like it's three pieces of, uh, three items.
Three items today.
You all are looking to surplus, so can you talk on each item?
Yes, so, um, I'll start with the train, because that seems to be the most, um, talked about. Um, the train was, is a replica, um, to represent a wreck that happened here near Henry County in June of nineteen hundred. Um, the train was brought in, to my knowledge, um, in two thousand and three-ish, so maybe eighteen years ago, from Pennsylvania, to act as a replica to represent that train wreck that happened near McDonough in nineteen hundred. That is most of the significance that I've found regarding the train. I was unable to get any real history on the road scraper and the silo. I do know that the silo is very rusted, um, and unsightly, and the road scraper is as well, and it's sitting right there in the middle of that field, um, at, of the entrance of the park.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Holmes.
So, Jonathan, so, I know that, um, um, members of the McDonough City Council, including the, uh, mayor-elect, would like to, to keep this train in the city. Is there a way that we can just donate this train to the city of McDonough versus, um, putting it out there on surplus?
So that would be a question for the attorney, um, and purchasing, from my knowledge, we have to surplus, surplus the item because they were, um, purchased by the county with county funds.
But can't we just donate it to the city?
Good evening, um, so what we would have to do first by, according to state law, is to surplus the item, and then at that point, if the board wants to make a decision to donate the surplus item to McDonough, we could do that, as long as there's no violation of the gratuities clause, um, is there a valuation of this train?
I found an old article, um, that was written when the train was being purchased and transported here to Georgia from Pennsylvania. And it stated then that there was roughly sixty-five thousand dollars paid, I don't know if that's actually true, because that was in a news article.
So how about we work out a, um, uh, intergovernmental agreement with the city of McDonough and place the train wherever they want us to place it?
So, if we put it on surplus, can't the city just buy it for a dollar?
It depends on the bid, so like, it would be opened up, so anyone could bid on it, it's not guaranteed that the city would.
But, but you could approve a motion to declare it surplus, and then another now therefore being resolved that county staff, um, entering to some type of agreement between the city of McDonough and the county for the transfer of that property. The only thing I would ask Commissioner Holmes to consider is, the city needs to be responsible for removing it, because, again, I don't know if it'll move, and if so, what that cost would be.
Okay, well, all costs would be on the city of McDonough.
Um, Commissioner Wilson.
So remind me again, how many injuries have been reported in, since the train's been there?
I don't have any reports of injuries on the train itself, again, my goal is to prevent injuries.
So there's a fence around that train, correct?
Yes, sir.
Like a six-foot fence, it's been there, what, a year or two?
Four, it's about four foot high.
There's about a four-foot high on the platform side, it's probably six on the outside.
So we're having problems with children climbing the fence?
We've had some instances of vandalism, we believe teenagers, I don't know if it's young adults, but we have had reports of people climbing that fence.
And I received an email from someone in support of the train, but they stated in the email that their kid likes to get on the train, so.
Governmental agreement with the city?
So if I had to guess, there's probably more children injured on the ball fields than there are on the trains, is that correct? Or we're not gonna take out the ball fields, that, we're not taking the ball fields away?
No, we're not taking the ball fields away.
But we're trying to prevent injuries. I'm confused. So we're taking the train away to keep people from being injured, and, but there's probably more people injured on the ball field, but we're gonna keep the ball fields?
Commissioner, I don't think that the only goal of removing the train is to prevent injuries, that is risk management's role in this. I think Parks has a bigger plan for the use of that property, and I'd let Mr. Penn speak to that. But I will say that there are some risk issues at that site, the, the entire park, that we're trying to work on.
But we have the, the park's name Heritage Park, so we start taking out these items out of Heritage Park. The next thing we're gonna hear is, we need to change the park name because there's no heritage in the park.
Well, I would disagree, because all of the items are not being removed of the heritage, we still have the Veterans' Wall, we still have the Veterans' Mu, Museum, we still have the Nolan House, there are a lot of, lot of the areas that will be preserved. Some of them are just unsightly and not safe.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna support moving any of the items out of, or putting them on salvage, uh, or surplus, I won't support that.
So what about the other two items, because there's a lot of talk about the train, so what about the other two items? Um, John?
Yeah, the silo and the road scraper, um, like, like I stated, there, I, I couldn't find too much of anything on those two items, they're just, I think they were just donated at one point, from, I did, from hearsay, that someone was trying to get rid of some stuff off their farm, and they donated it to the county, and the county accepted and put it over at Heritage Park, that's what I was told.
Okay, as, as, okay, all right. Those that are here for public comment, if you all, if you would just call the name Stephanie, and, um, you have.
Gretchen Conis is first. Gretchen Conis is first.
Okay, can, can they, um, okay, so you have three minutes to speak.
Okay, thank you, um, good evening, Chairman and Board of Commissioners. I'm a Henry County resident for thirty-two years, and five years in, uh, McDonough, enough to kind of get the pulse of this area, and, um, I'm a taxpayer, and a recent Master Gardener, um, participant and involved in projects. Um, I thank you for allowing me to talk today, because I'm very concerned about this refurbishing of our beloved park. And my concern are the priorities of the Commission and the Board, because this is, as we have talked about, uh, historical Heritage Park, and, uh, it doesn't seem like we're working together to preserve this, but to, um, you know, uh, get, get rid of what's old and rusted, and what's old and rusted is there because it's old and it has been neglected. Um, parks have long been advantageous for our health, our well-being, part of our culture, yours, mine, young and old, and an integral part of, um, of just our life. And, um, I am really concerned at what was important to past, uh, council members when they formulated and started this historical Heritage Park, um, has not been passed on to current, um, members. Uh, the late Gary Barham came out, um, and talked and walked with master gardeners in that park, and he shared his vision with us, um, about the park, he listened to our concerns, and at that time, he assured us that the neglected areas and the disrepair would be addressed. That was over a year ago, and we're waiting, we're waiting. So my concern here today is, um, number one, when did the history of McDonough and Henry County become insignificant? You're wanting to get rid of a train, and a silo, and a road scraper, um, houses, historical houses that have been moved, um, have been left to fall and crumble in disrepair in spite of letters and conversation to local authorities and to, um, the commissioners. So if, if we don't have the money, and that's what we keep hearing, to fix these things that are falling apart, where are we gonna get the money to, uh, to move all these things and to take them away? And when these structures were moved, wasn't there a plan to maintain them, where's the money? I pay my taxes, I want to know what the plan is, where the money is, and I want to, talking about the train, why does it have to be, um, a, a symbol of a train wreck? Why can't we look at this train?
Your three minutes are up, who's next?
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
Don Dunlap.
Don?
My name's Don Dunlap, I'm at one ninety-two Ashley Drive in McDonough. Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners, I'm addressing you as a citizen of Henry County who appreciates our community's rich history and doesn't want to see it disappear. I believe that the events of the evening of June twenty-third, nineteen hundred, highlight some of the most positive characteristics of Henry Countyans, and they deserve to be celebrated, not scrapped as useless surplus. That evening, the Macon to Atlanta train pulled by the number seven engine went down a sixty-foot embankment into Camp Creek due to the trestle being washed out by torrential rains the previous week, then burst into flames. Flagman J.J. Quinlan scaled the muddy embankment, rescuing two Bostonian women passengers, and then ran the two miles back to McDonough to the train depot in the pouring rain to warn them of the washed-out trestle and get help. I would submit that he was a genuine hero, and that more of our citizens should learn about how his quick action saved the lives of hundreds of folks that would have been on subsequent trains. I teach school here in Henry County, and over the past several years have been able to take groups of eighth-grade Georgia study students as part of their Unit on Georgia Transportation on a field trip, highlighting the history of rail in Henry County, and culminating with the train wreck of nineteen hundred. We've had speakers like Senator Brian Strickland, Transportation Secretary, uh, Director Sam Baker, Moving Henry Forward blogger Clayton Cart, that have come and addressed the history of our, uh, rail in Henry County, what the transportation, things that we're being, dealing with right now, and also what things are gonna be confronted in the future. We've traveled to the McDonough City Hall to have the mayor discuss the wreck with us and some of the city council members, and John Quinn, who was responsible and instrumental for having that marker placed over on forty-two. We then take the students over to the marker so they can kind of see it, and down to the actual site of the wreck down there at, right at Camp Creek. And we then went to Heritage Park to actually experience that history there with the train engine. Removal of the train engine would be taking away, a way for our citizens to connect with their history. We should be doing more as a community to highlight that history, not trying to remove it. Perhaps if the task of maintaining these items as a historical significance is something that Parks and Recreation Department isn't able or willing to do, maybe a public-private partnership with an historical organization here in the county, or even a dedicated 501(c)(3) could be formed to maintain them. Just a suggestion, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Dunlap.
Arlo Prater.
Who, who?
Arlo Prater.
Okay.
In the November twelfth, twenty twenty-one, Moving Henry Forward, it was stated that there would be a vote taken during tonight's meeting on removing or surplusing the Heritage Park's historic steam locomotive, silo, and road scraper. Is the will of the residents of Henry County or the desire of the county commissioners, who have been elected to serve the community's needs? The article further states that the Board of Commissioners is, quote, "looking to improve the park," and shed light on the positive things that have happened and are happening, and that have happened and are happening in Clayton, in Henry County. Is the roads, Adams Road Land Scraper, which was donated, that was used to scrape land for the constructing, constructing Henry County's first runway, to be the first private individually-owned airport in Georgia, not significant? Is the nineteen thirty-three steam locomotive the last of its kind to be built and operated off of steam, not relevant to Henry County's history? How many young people today even know what a silo is or its purpose? Would it not be cheaper to paint these three structures rather than have the exorbitant removal expense? The other structures, which were also donated, the nineteen hundreds Wonder Room Schoolhouse, the early, the city's early nineteen fifties Public's, uh, Library, the Cook House, and most likely, um, will most likely in the future, experience the same demolished demise. To abolish such historic structures is a total disregard and disrespect of Henry County's history. Without a history, a community is lost. It seems that cancel culture has taken over the nation, and even here with the removal of the historic statue in the square. Yes, these old structures and buildings have sadly not been maintained over the years, and repairs would be costly. But isn't history worth preserving? Didn't former Commissioner Gary Barham, not long before his death, meet with some master gardeners and promise five hundred thousand dollars as a capital project for refurbishing some of the historic attractions in the Heritage Park? What happened to these earmarked funds? The Moving, uh, Henry Forward also states that the commissioners want to revitalize and improve the, the park's image. What are these proposed plans? I propose that this discussion be tabled to research the possibility of funds being made available to allow each of the structures. made available to allow each of the structures to be repaired. Perhaps businesses or construction workers could provide their services or some government agencies. This will allow the history of these structures to be continued rather than to be lost. From personal experience, I have witnessed numerous visitors, young and old, come and learn about these historic artifacts. There is a strong public interest to preserve some of this great county's history that cannot be replaced. An article in the recent fall issue of We, Henry...
Thank you for your comments. Stephanie, who's next?
Robert Kolpak, two-seven-two Cotton Indian Creek Road, McDonough, Georgia. Good evening, Commissioner, Chair. Heritage Park's surplus, too many dilapidated items at certain parks, no money to maintain items yet, we have monies to build new parks. Question I have, what sense does it make to have three parks on Fairview Road and in unincorporated part of the county? How much did we make with the skating rink at Nash Farms? We argue about not putting in impact fees. Those monies, those fees would help infrastructure, help parks. When you're the cheapest place to do business, yet claim to be in demand, something doesn't add up. You have a fiduciary duty to make the best decisions for our county. As far as our finance manager, I applaud our finance director, we are fair in doing business. If you'd like to do business with the county, bid more competitively. And for our Commissioners, if, I would love for you guys to drive up to Henry Connector, make a right towards the interstate on one fifty-five, try to go to Greenwood Industrial or from Greenwood Industrial over this way, any time of the day after three o'clock. It's a joke. You cannot do business that way. We need roads put in, we need to put monies to this area of town. And last but not least, there's no reason for three Commissioners ever to miss the same meeting. Business needs to be conducted, was said when Gary was sick in the hospital. You cannot have it both ways. You've got to do your job and show up. If your car pulling in to save gas and someone breaks down, you call me. I will always come and pick you up. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That's all.
Okay, so due to the...
Madam Chair.
Yes.
May I please? Thank you, all of you, both sides of the equation. This is an important matter. I did visit the park, I do have some concerns. We talked about the structures. We don't, at this point, none of them are safe. The concern that I have, regardless of whether they're surplus or refurbished, number one, we need to know if asbestos is there, we need to know if there's lead paint. That will dictate exactly what we can or cannot do with those structures. I think this is a matter that needs further discussion and comments and Madam Chair, I would make a motion that we go ahead and table it for now and, and revisit at a later date.
Commissioner Cannon, I, I am in agreement with you. I do want to have the opportunity to visit some of the suggestions that have been made by the public with regards to, you know, maybe relocating it in a different space, you know, what the revital, what are the revitalization plans for the park, public-private partnerships, if that's what we need to look at, or creating a 501(c)(3) or whatever that may be. I'm in agreement with you, Commissioner Cannon, I just think that we need to table this at this particular moment, give us an opportunity to review everything and then, you know, maybe even look at having, you know, some type of town, town hall in order to get some additional public input because this, the parks do belong to our citizens. And so we have to take in consideration, you know, what they want in their community because they are the taxpayers. So we're going to table this and move on to the next item. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, you'll need to make a motion to table it and take a vote.
Okay, so you make a motion, you make a motion. I second, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Sherri. Let's see if we can get back on track.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. There is a limited amount of federal funds available from the federal government to the local governments through the Atlanta Regional Commission. So the Atlanta Regional Commission is soliciting projects from Henry County. The staff has come up with a list of six road projects and one transit project. So I'll go through the road projects, they are in the order of priority. Number one is State Route eighty-one widening, phase two preliminary engineering. Number two, Mill Road widening, phase two preliminary engineering. Number three, East Atlanta Road resurfacing. Number four, Patrick Henry Parkway, preliminary engineering. Number five, Kellytown Road resurfacing. And number six, Jodeca Road widening. In the following columns, the, there are estimated costs of these six projects, the eighty percent federal funding that we are requesting, then the twenty percent local match that we will be required to come up with if we are granted federal grants. And the last column on the right shows the money that we have available now, which is for the first project, State Route eighty-one, four hundred thousand of plus five funds. For the remainder of the projects, we will be requesting funds from the general fund if federal grants are given to us. There is one transit project to start a new fixed-out local bus service recommended by our newly, the, the Henry County Transit Master Plan that is near completion. It is estimated to cost six million over three years, which comes to one point six million per year, four point eight million total that we will be requesting on federal funds. It will require twenty percent local match, which is four hundred, four thousand per year, one point two million total. It will be a general fund request in fiscal years twenty-three through twenty-five. And that concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioner Thomas.
I know we've not had a full time to consider this, but for the projects that you've listed, do you think some of them will qualify for the money that's coming down from the infrastructure
The, it has just been signed into law. I understand this new law has earmarked millions of dollars for road projects as well as transit projects. So I'm very optimistic that we are looking at federal, additional federal funds in the upcoming years. But the money that is right now allocated, available is before this new law has been signed into law. So we will have to just have to wait until additional funds become available under the new infrastructure bill that has just signed into law.
Okay, because if so, then we can definitely see how to take some of the fundings that's presently listed to help with the last allocation that you listed about the transit, to help with that.
Yes, correct.
And also, and I'm not sure, Sherri, if some of these monies can be used from the last monies, the A, our, the ARP money that we have now, the forty-five million, if some of these projects can receive some funding from there as well?
Yes, ma'am, we can certainly consider that as well.
Okay.
Any additional questions?
No, but thank you.
So can I get a, do we have a motion on this?
Yes, we are requesting that you make a motion.
Can I get a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we go forward with the transportation plan as outlined. I do want to charge the administration to look at new monies that are coming down the pipeline that we can use as well to support it, as well as the ARP money that we have now.
Second. Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Cannon. Any further discussion? Here and now, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is on the Financial Services. An ordinance of the Henry County Board of Commissioners amending Section two dash two dash thirty-three purchases bids regarding constitutional officers.
Good evening again, Madam Chair, Commissioners and the Henry County community. What you have before you is a request to amend our purchasing ordinance, Section two dash two dash thirty-three. And the purpose behind that is to allow for an exemption for the constitutional officers. The goal is that the policy not apply to the acquisition or disposition of commodities, equipment, and services obtained or contracted for by the tax commissioner, clerk of the Superior Court, judge of the probate court, or the sheriff's office, collectively referred to as our constitutional officers. The constitutional officers may participate in all or part of the county's purchasing process without the obligation of complying with our full procedures that are outlined in our current policy. Any contract entered into by any of the constitutional officers does not need approval by the Board of County Commissioners, except as otherwise specifically required by state law. And so I'd like to include this exemption and the staff recommends approval of this ordinance amendment. Questions?
Any questions? No questions? Can I get a motion? Motion, Commissioner Cannon.
Second.
Did you second Commissioner Wilson? Okay. There are no discussions, all in favor? All opposed? Motion fails.
Thank you.
A resolution of the Board of Commissioners awarding RFQ twenty-one dash ninety-two for comprehensive diversity study to Griffin and Strong P.C. in the amount of three hundred
Good evening, Madam Chair again. Madam Chair, Commissioners and the Henry County community, the request you have before you this evening is a resolution authorizing the award of RFQ number twenty-one dash ninety-two for a comprehensive disparity study to Griffin and Strong of Atlanta, Georgia, in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars. We posted this RFQ on Team Georgia Marketplace, GLGA, which is a Georgia local government marketplace, on our own Henry County purchasing website. Three vendors, same three vendors in our initial one, submitted their proposal of qualifications for the study. We formed an evaluation committee, reviewed and evaluated and scored, with Griffin and Strong being the highest scored vendor. Griffin and Strong was asked to provide a cost of services to us so that we can estimate their costs. Staff recommends award to Griffin and Strong for the disparity study in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars. Funds are currently available in the financial services budget.
Um, so, so David, I, I have a question with regards to, can you tell me a little bit about the Griffin and Strong Company?
I can talk to them being one of the largest disparity study companies that's out there that they are. I can't touch on their ownership because we don't currently talk about quotas or goals for ourselves, but it does meet one of the requirements that we had placed in looking for getting the disparity study done. Their proposed cost of services was initially three hundred and sixty-five thousand. We asked for a best and final offer from them. They worked with us by providing a best and final offer of three hundred thousand dollars, which was approximately five thousand dollars more than the previous disparity study request for proposal that we had put out back in September of twenty nineteen. So they are very cooperative with us.
Commissioner Thomas.
Do you have a timeline and did they give you a timeline for completing the study or have you requested a timeline to have the study completely done?
They provided a timeline in their proposal. It takes about approximately a little over a year to a year and a half to complete a full study.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Uh, can I get a second?
Second.
Uh, no further discussion, all in favor?
Thank you.
Fleet Services, resolution approving the purchase of nine Ford F-150s from Allen Visual Ford in Marlboro in the amount of two hundred and forty-eight thousand, five forty-five through state contract, nine replacement trucks, four for parks and rec, four for code enforcement, and one DOT using capital improvement plan funds as approved by the Board in the CIP.
That's correct. Good morning, uh, sorry, good morning. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Board and fine citizens of this county. This is a resolution approving, of course, the purchase of nine Ford F-150s as part of our capital improvement plan. Basically, Parks and Recreation are four, Ford go to code enforcement, and one go to DOT. They're replacing high-mileage units such as ninety-six Ranger, ninety-eight Ranger, ninety, other ninety-eight Ranger, oh-one F-150, and several vehicles were, of course, repurposed to code enforcement, so it's some old Crown Vics, Escape, and DOT has a extremely high-mileage vehicle, F-250. So we're asking approval for nine F-150s. And we have a time delay of eleven-thirty, it's a price cutoff from Ford for this price. And Ford is just about guaranteed, at least a ten percent or more, so we're talking some additional money if we don't.
I just stand in support of my peer over Fleet. State of Georgia pricing is valid only through November thirtieth and the, any increase is unknown. And so this helps expedite the process in terms of utilizing the state contract.
Okay. Any questions? Can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries. Parks and Rec, resolution to approve an option for the lease or purchase of artificial holiday trees for parks using general funds. Mr. Penn?
Good evening again, Madam Chair, Board of Commissioners, Henry County residents. Before you have a resolution to approve the option for the lease or purchase of artificial holiday trees for parks, this request was a request sent from one of the Board of Commissioners to the county manager for us to look at possibly putting holiday trees in a few of the parks for the holidays. And so we, as a staff, went out and got pricing for what they would cost. We identified three parks that these trees could go, in which were Village Park, Heritage Park, and Nash Farm Park. Traditionally, Nash Farm does have a tree, a ceremony, holiday... Traditionally, Nash Farm does have a tree, a ceremony, holiday lighting there, so that's why that park was chosen as well. So the three options are: Option one is a three-year lease, including installation, take-down, transport, and storage in the amount of forty-four thousand, seven twenty-four ninety-five per tree, totaling one hundred and thirty-four thousand, one seventy-four eighty-five. Option two is to purchase, not including installation, take-down, transport, storage in the amount of twenty-nine, three fifty-three seventy, totaling eighty-eight thousand, sixty-one dollars and ten cent. Option three is to purchase, but it will include one year of labor, which includes installation, take-down, and transport in the amount of thirty-five thousand, one fifty-three seventy, per tree totaling one hundred and five thousand, four sixty-one. Staff is recommending option number one for various reasons, as of we don't have anywhere to store these trees, staffing, you know, putting them up, taking them down, all of those things. So that's why option one would be the staff... What staff is recommending.
If you were to purchase, do we even have storage space for the trees?
No.
Are there any questions? Okay, can I get a motion for the first option, option one? Can you roll back to the first option, please? Can I get a motion on the first option? Motion on the second option? Can I get a motion on the third option? Can I get a motion?
All right.
Thank you.
Annexation. Twenty-one dash zero eight, City of McDonough has received a request for annexation for properties located at three forty-three Turner Church Road, District Three.
Good evening again. This annexation request, AX twenty-one oh eight, was presented before the Board of Commissioners on September twenty-first. After the annexation was presented, it was brought to our attention that one of the five parcels was missing in the original request. So the City of McDonough... McDonough basically provided the updated information that was originally omitted. The applicant's request to annex and rezone a total of three hundred and nineteen plus or minus acres, which includes all five parcels, from RA Residential Agricultural to the City of McDonough's equivalent, RA two thousand, which is their residential agricultural. As in the previous annexation, the request... The City of McDonough already owns the property, and we have found no grounds for the objection. So essentially, there's no vote required. And the map shows in the red hash the parcel that was omitted in the original request.
Okay.
So it's really for, I guess, for information purposes only?
It's for information purposes?
Yes, ma'am. There's no grounds for objection.
Well, there's no motion on this here, no vote on this, just information?
Madam Chair, next question.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the information. Anybody have any question? Next is the planning and zoning. RZ twenty-one dash thirteen, the Reservoir Group LLC of Madison, Georgia, requests a rezoning from RA Residential Agricultural to R two single-family residence sewer for property located at five sixty-five Elliott Road in landlocks fifty-seven and seventy-two of the Seventh District. The property consists of forty-two point three-one-two plus acres, and the request is for a single-family residential subdivision in District Three.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. The item before you is for property located at five six five Elliott Road and is forty-two point three-one-two plus or minus acres. As mentioned before, the request is to rezone the property from RA Residential Agricultural to R two sewer, single-family residence. The future land use map designated for this area is low-density residential, which would allow for up to two dwelling units per net acre. Here is the site plan, as shown in your exhibit books, as well as on the overhead projection. The proposed development is for a fifty-lot subdivision, conservation subdivision. A majority of the lots do back up directly to open space. The proposed development is intended to mirror, or at least be very similar, to the Roland Place subdivision that is across the street. On July eighth, two thousand and twenty-one, the zoning advisory board approved the conditional use request for a conservation subdivision with three conditions. The proposal for a fifty-lot subdivision brings the net density to one point eight three dwelling units per net acre, and that is under the allowed two density, two dwelling units per net density, that the future land use map calls for. As shown here, these are the elevations for the development. This was provided by the applicant. Once more, on July eighth, the zoning advisory board did recommend approval of this request to rezone the property from RA to R two sewer with eleven conditions. Staff has recommended updated conditions totaling sixteen, I believe? Yes, sixteen conditions. I do want to mention that the previously shown elevations, they were provided to staff before we had updated our language regarding building materials. So those elevations are not reflected by our... Rather, our new condition for building materials. We have not yet received updated elevations for that. That is all. Thank you so much, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Can you do me a favor and read the conditions into the record?
Certainly. Condition one, the development shall be limited to fifty lots. Compliance with zoning conditions and development standards may further limit the number of dwelling units. Condition two... Condition two, the entrances shall be located such that the minimum intersection site distance and minimum spacing requirement are met per the road's posted speed limit, and shall have a deceleration lane and acceleration taper designed and constructed to Henry County DOT standards. Three, each subsequent permitted home in the development shall be compatible with pre-existing homes as determined by the planning and zoning department. The planning and zoning department is authorized to require the heated floor... heated square footage to be increased and/or architectural style to be modified in instances where incompatibility is determined. No more than twenty percent of all homes shall have a minimum of two thousand four hundred square foot of heated space, and no less than eighty percent of all homes shall have a minimum of two thousand eight hundred square feet of heated space. The traffic impact studies shall include the intersection of Elliott and Highway twenty East and Elliott and East Lake Road. The improvements required by the TIS shall be the responsibility of the owner developer. This may include left-turn lane. All homes shall include a covered front porch or stoop, is number five. Number six, an HOA shall be required. Condition seven, each home shall be built on site. Eight, each home shall have a minimum two-car garage. Garages shall be side entry or feasible. Nine, all homes shall consist of four sides, brick or stone, with twenty percent accent material, which may include hardy plank. All disturbed areas shall be sodded, except where landscaping is present or installed. Condition eleven, interior streets shall have a minimum five-foot-wide sidewalks, pedestrian lights, and street trees, which meet the equivalent standards of the highway corridor overlay district. Streetlights shall not be required where pedestrian lights are installed. Condition twelve, all landscape buffers shall not be located on residential lots. Condition thirteen, the subdivision shall be developed as an owner-occupied community. No more than three percent of the homes may be rented or leased purchased at any one time. Condition fourteen, if developed as a conservation subdivision, the minimum lots size shall be fifteen thousand square feet. The average lot size shall be a minimum of eighteen thousand square feet. These requirements shall govern unless otherwise conditioned. Condition fifteen, all stormwater management facilities shall be on their own lot and secured by a five-foot-high fence. And the last condition, condition sixteen, an amenity package shall be provided to the residential portion of the development and shall include at a minimum three or more of the following: A, open-air pavilion; B, community fire pit; C, dog park; and D, pocket park.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Persons wishing to speak in favor of the request, including the applicant, will have a collect... collective total of ten minutes to address the board. Do we have anyone here willing... wanting to speak in favor?
Evening, Madam Chair and Board. I'm Steve Moore, consulting thirteen fifty Keys Ferry Court, McDonough, Georgia. Here tonight representing the Reservoir Group in this rezoning. I'll put just another plan up. It's slightly modified to be reflective of some of the conditions that have been proposed with regards to the amenity and some additional open space that we've added. Forty-two point three acres of land right across from the Gerald Hudgens Development and just past the Roland Place subdivision. This development would be very, very similar to that, maybe a little superior in regards to the design of this, where the open space is kind of hugged around these lots, and we've made an effort to try to get all these lots to touch the open space so that it does meet that more intent of a conservation subdivision. But as Kenta mentioned, we're requesting an R two zoning on sewer. The... That is the same exact zoning that was granted at Roland Place. And the conditions related to the conditional use for the conservation subdivision are the exact same: eighteen thousand square foot average minimum and twelve thousand square foot minimum lot area, but eighteen thousand square foot average. We've set aside about forty-five percent of the site as open space, which includes a hundred-foot buffer off of Elliott Road, fifty-foot buffers around the perimeter of the property, and then there is a section of floodplain at the southern edge of the property, the southwestern edge of the property, that is also protected in that open space area. We have, as a result of the conditions that Kenta read, we've added in this area an amenity center that would include the mail kiosk, open-air pavilion, and then we've also added a trail system, too, that would start at that location, and it runs across the street through a painted crosswalk, and then it would run around all the way to the end of the cul-de-sac here, to essentially provide the ability to have a large walking loop system there. This project will be built in one phase with fifty lots. We have the one entrance. It's likely this will just go in all at one time. And the builder is estimating these homes to start in the four seventy-five range, probably in the four seventy-five to five seventy-five range. So this will be a nice subdivision. I think it's going to be a great addition to the residential stock in the... In this Elliott Road corridor, very consistent, if not better than a lot of the other projects up there. So we're excited about the opportunity to provide this. As Kenta mentioned, we did receive approval from the zoning advisory board for the conservation subdivision. We also received recommendation of approval for the rezoning change, or the zoning change. Regarding the conditions, the majority of them are okay. I do have just a couple that I wanted to address and just ask for some consideration. On condition number four, and if you want to pull them back up, that's fine, or I can read it again. But there was a condition about a traffic impact study, which is always required on every zoning, and it's fine. This one was a little bit different than the other ones. It required... It extended the limits of that study to go all the way to basically either end of Elliott Road and study the East Lake Road intersection and the Highway twenty intersection, and then puts the onus of any improvements identified through that study on the developer. That's different than, at least in my remembering, that's different wording than all of the other zonings that I've represented. Typically, what that study does is you model, and you... The traffic engineer studies the impacts his project will have at that intersection, and then identifies those improvements that need to be made. And if there are system improvements, which are current, you know, if there's a intersection close by that's being overburdened, that's already overburdened, that's not put... The improvements aren't put on the developer to do, because that's a system improvement, that's a county issue that needs to be addressed, because it's already there before we even started the project. The way this is worded, it kind of just says, you do the study, and if there's any problems, you may have to put a left-turn lane out at Highway twenty. You may have to put a left-turn lane down at East Lake Road, and obviously, we don't... My private developer client doesn't have the ability to go acquire right-of-way or tell GDOT we're going to put a left-turn lane in State Highway twenty, just because this traffic study says. So what I'd like for that, at least considered, to maybe be rewarded to focus on the intersection that we're proposing, and that, obviously, he would be responsible for those improvements at that intersection. If a left-turn lane is warranted, certainly that's his responsibility. But beyond that, if there are system improvements, which means there are already county-wide improvements that need to be made, I just don't want my client to be on the hook for that. I just ask for your consideration of that. The... There's also one other thing, and a lot of you, I think, were on this... I'm sorry?
Item you're saying is one other thing?
I apologize. Number eleven... The one I just read was number four?
Okay.
Number eleven talks about the five-foot sidewalk internal on all the streets with street trees and pedestrian lights.
Can you turn to item number eleven on the slide, please?
So it requires the improvements within the internal streets to match those requirements of the Highway Overlay District. We're fine with the street trees, fine with the five-foot sidewalk. Pedestrian lights, and some of you may remember, I brought this up in front of this board on another project in the same EMC district, that they don't have pedestrian lights. The EMC doesn't have pedestrian lights. Our only solution was to have more streetlights, and we... I presented a graphic that the electric company provided that showed how they would install streetlights to meet the continuous coverage requirement along the sidewalks, and it was like, it was a street light every seventy-five feet or something, and it was going to look like Wrigley Field out there. So this board granted us a variance or a modification to the zoning conditions to basically do away with that requirement. We're just asking for that. This is not in the Highway Overlay District, and we think it's going to take away from the character of the subdivision, have this metropolitan-lit walking trail through the internal street. So I'd ask for your consideration on that. The last comment or condition was number nine. I guess I was out of order a little bit. Is on now on there? Yeah. Yeah. And we are okay with that as it's worded. I'll just start out the conversation by saying that. We'd like the consideration of, in the event that somebody wanted to have less than an all-brick home, that they wanted to have something that looked more like a traditional craftsman-style home with a brick water table or stacked stone-water table, we have... This board has approved a condition in the past that reads, "All homes will consist entirely of a combination of two or more of the following: on all sides, brick, stone, stucco, cement, fiberboard, and then no vinyl, except for soft and seasoned fascia." And that just gives the end user the ability. If they don't want an all-brick home, then they can have a more craftsman-style home. Again, we're okay with the condition as it's written. Just ask for your consideration there to give a little bit more flexibility to the end user. But with that, I respectfully ask for your request of... Or for your approval of this request, and I'll be available to answer questions when my time is... Thank you.
So, staff, I have a question with regards to item four and... The... What was the last item? Eleven? Was it eleven? Are those items that we can look at, I guess, for the applicant?
Certainly, yes.
Okay. And I am... What was the other item with nine? I'm just... I couldn't be supportive of changing that.
Madam Chair, can I... Can I interrupt real quick? We need to call for opposition before you all go through that, please.
Okay.
If there's any opposition.
Is there anyone here wanting to speak in opposition? Okay, if you would state your name.
Chair Harold and Commissioners, my name is Charles Downey. I live at five-five-seven Heathmore Drive, McDonough, Georgia. I remember back in two thousand and five, thereabouts, it was standard policy that the traffic impact study was provided first before the cases would come, before the public and before the Board of Commissioners. And I'd like to see that reinstated because it seems like we should get the traffic issues out of the way before we do all this other public hearing as far as hearing the cases. And there's a trend in this area, which is a little different from other areas. The trend is for larger houses and larger homes. Since August of two thousand and ten, I did a study here. This is just for, like I say, August the twentieth to September the twenty-first. These are recent sales for property near this site. If you look at the addresses there, all on Elliot Road and they're right in the same area. And all the lots are two acres plus. The price range is from five hundred and eighteen thousand to one point two million dollars. And so I would like for these lots to be a little bit larger, be more in the character of the area because large lots do sell. In fact, there's a lot at six hundred Elliot Road, you see, is a two-acre lot with a six hundred and forty thousand dollar house. It's on sewer, so there's no reason why larger lots and larger houses won't sell in this area. And if I read the maps correctly, this property touches Walnut Creek. And Walnut Creek, there's a main trunk line for the sewer system from Henry County. So Henry County sewer system is on this property, so the developer has a cost savings there. So he should be able to put in a sewer system more cost-effective than, say, Roland Place. Roland Place had to stretch that sewer system out about thousand, two thousand feet before they could connect to the main trunk line. So I just would like to see the lot sizes be increased at least a minimum of twenty-two thousand square feet. Thank you.
Hey, Board. Robert Kopeck again. Look, on the conservation lots, what it really is, is they can't use some of that land. And these fifteen thousand square foot lots don't make any sense. You don't have a place to play ball in with your kids, very close to each other and like the registry that's off of Crumley Road. It's a beautiful home, but there's no land to houses and they've just jammed them up jelly-tight because it's easier and cheaper on the sewer system. We also got the reservoir at Calcutta on Miller's Mill that's going to be the same way. Both registry and the reserve at Calcutta, you know what they've done? It's not a conservation lot, they've cut every tree. And just like where they put in the public, all the trees are gone. I don't know why we're allowing it, but I'm not in favor of fifteen thousand square foot lots in rural, unincorporated areas. If we're in the city of Stockbridge and McDonough, not much can be said, it's incorporated. But unincorporated needs to be rural and it needs to be minimum half-acre lots or more. And I'm glad they want to put three thousand square foot homes and big homes, but the price points that that gentleman just showed you, these houses won't match it. And if they do, it's not the same quality. Thanks.
Is there anyone else that'd like to come forward and speak in opposition?
Let's talk a minute about the number four and the number eleven. So on number four, can we put that the developer would be responsible for any project-related improvements?
Certainly.
And that it may include a left-turn lane in Elliot Road at the proposed intersection?
Yes, we can.
Okay. In number eleven?
Wait a minute, Commissioner, are we getting this in the record, what he's, okay. Because I don't want any mishaps about what's being stated in these conditions.
I'm assuming that on number eleven, that the area could be a streetlight district? Is that correct?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. Number nine, tell me about Roland Place for just a moment, I was not a part of that. Are those homes all four-side brick?
I do not, I do not believe so. Quite frankly, I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, all right. It's important to me that we kind of continue Gary Barham's concept in that area. There are some things that have occurred that I wasn't real happy with, considering some of those developments. This group has been very receptive to modifying, making sure that all of the homes opened up to a green space, which was not the original plan. I think they're making every effort to make it a true conservation community. What my approval would be, or my suggestion would be, that we do sixty percent of the homes four-side brick and the other forty percent a combination, as mentioned by Mr. Moore. So it would be a combination of two or more of the following: on all sides, brick, stone, stucco, and cement fiberboard. And I'd like to add to that, that forty percent would have a water table.
Certainly.
And I would make a motion with these changes to these conditions to approve.
Got a motion, can I get a second? You have questions? Okay, Commissioner Thomas.
To the Commissioner, the question would be, would you consider adding a release percentage on your HOA to the community? You left it open to determine when that will be released to the community?
What is common, Steve, can you tell me how soon the HOA is released to the community?
I know on Commissioner Thomas's, her request on several, it's been at fifty percent, I believe. Is that right?
Seventy is good.
Seventy percent? And I think that's acceptable, I guess.
Okay, let's add that, please.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Just for clarification on the all-brick, does that go back and revert to your original, the original condition that was allowed twenty percent?
Yes.
Oh, the accents, okay.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay.
Still the twenty percent accent.
And then was there any thought on the pedestrian lights?
Yeah, we will not require those. It would become a streetlight district.
Oh, okay.
Is that the correct verbiage? Does anybody know?
Chair, is that the correct verbiage?
I'm sorry, I was looking at the condition. Ask the question again, I'm sorry.
The community would be a streetlight district, not requiring the developer to put the pedestrian lights?
Yes, so they'll still have streetlights? It appears it's just the actual pedestrian-type light the company cannot, the EMC can't provide. So they still will have a streetlight district, that is correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Commissioner, I need some clarification on the building materials. I don't know that I'm clear.
I'm sorry, I kind of muddled through that. So sixty percent of the homes would be four-side brick with accent. Forty percent of the homes would be a combination of two or more of the following: brick, stone, stucco on all sides, and cement fiberboard, with each of those homes having a water table.
And I guess my question would be, would it still be twenty percent on the hardy plank on that forty percent?
I don't think that's what he's saying.
Okay.
That's why we need to make sure that we have it clear, because if I'm understanding...
That's correct. No.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Yes.
I want to request the Commissioner to consider eight-feet sidewalks instead of five.
Again, I want to make sure we're kind of keeping the same plan. Do we know about Roland Place?
So Roland Place, I think it is the front-side brick and then the three-sided hardy.
I'm sorry, the question is sidewalk width?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
In Roland Place.
All right, look that up. So just, he's going to look that up real quick. But just for clarification, are we saying that the front side needs to be a combination of bricks, stone, and stucco with the two-foot water table around?
For the forty percent, yes.
Correct, okay. Just want to make sure that's what we're saying.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So the combination would only be on the front? So you could have a back that's three-sided, all cement fiberboard, is that what you're asking? Okay.
Apologies, I don't recall the sidewalk width for Roland Place. This was internal sidewalks or?
Internal side.
Yes, okay.
Mr. Moore is saying he thinks they're four feet. I don't want them to be four feet, but if they're eight, then let's match that. If they're not, we'll leave them at five.
Excellent, okay.
Can you research that for us?
Absolutely, yes.
Make that adjustment. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll...
I'm sorry.
We'll need to know what it's going to be for the zoning condition, because I can have staff research it. But if it's four and a quarter, then we need to know what is the minimum that you would like? And then what we can do is five, okay.
Five feet.
So no less than five feet. So sidewalks, no less than five feet?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I would like to add some one other thing. You said your retention ponds will be on a separate lot, correct? Not owned by, not connected to any homeowner's lot. Is that one of the conditions?
Yes, condition fifteen, all stormwater management facilities shall be on their own lot and secured by a five-foot-high fence.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Got a motion on the floor, can I get a second? Oh, you have a question? Okay. Oh, you got a second, okay, all right.
Madam Chair, we need to remake the motion because there were two initial conditions that were stated after the motion was made.
So I'll make a motion to approve based on all of the conditions that have been added.
Commissioner Holmes, do you still have a second? Okay, thank you. If there are no additional questions, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda. Public hearing, RZ twenty-one dash twelve, Hearn Road. Henry Twenty-four LLC of Stockbridge requests a rezoning from RA Residential to R-two Single Family Residential for the property located at sixty-one fifty-two Hearn Road in Landlock One ninety-three of the twelfth district. The property consists of seventeen point zero four acres and the request is for Single Family Residential Subdivision, District Five.
Good evening, Chair, Board members, and citizens of Henry County. The rezoning request in front of you is for property located on Hearn Road. The property is currently zoned RA Residential Agricultural and the parcel is seventeen point zero seven, plus or minus acres. And the applicant is requesting a rezoning from RA to R-two Septic. The subject property is highlighted in green and is directly west of Hearn Road and south of Austin Road. As you can see from this slide, the subject property is surrounded by various RA properties and R-two subdivisions. This slide shows the site plan displaying nineteen proposed lots. The applicant is requesting to rezone seventeen point zero seven, plus or minus acres, from RA Residential Agricultural to R-two Single Family Residence for the purpose of a single-family subdivision on Septic. The site plan illustrates a total of nineteen single-family lots with a cell tower north of the development area. Any development must be at least one hundred and ninety-four point seven feet from the fall area of the cell tower. The zoning advisory board recommended approval of the applicant's request with conditions on July eighth, two thousand and one. Staff is recommending approval of the applicant's request to rezone from RA to R-two on Septic with the following conditions, which I will now read into the record. Number one, the houses should be built on-site. No modular homes will be allowed with two car-side entry garages, standard where feasible. Number two, all homes shall consist of four-sided brick. Number three, all homes should be a minimum of twenty-three hundred square feet. Number four, all homes should include a covered front porch or stoop. Number five, an HOA should be required. Number six, all disturbed areas should be sodded except where landscaping is present or installed. Number seven, all stormwater management facilities shall be on their own lot and secured by a five-foot-high fence. All driveways, access easements, emergency access easements must be paved and dirt-free. Number eight, no residential structure may be built within two hundred feet from the wireless communications facility north of the subject property. Number nine, entrances into the development shall require fifteen to twenty-foot wide brick and/or stone illuminated signage on both sides of the entrances, meeting all code and permitting requirements. And number ten, each permitted home in the development shall be compatible with existing homes as determined by the planning and zoning department. The planning and zoning department is authorized to require the heated square footage to be increased and/or the architectural style to be modified in instances where incompatibility is determined. I'll be happy to take any questions.
I want to modify. I think you had in there, two-car garage where feasible, I need that changed to three-car where feasible.
Yes, sir.
Condition number one. Everything else I'm okay with.
Okay, Commissioner Holmes, you said that you amended the...
Yeah, condition number one to a three-car side-entry where feasible.
All right, this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of... can come forward, including the applicant. You have ten minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners, my name is John Palmer, two thirty-five Corporate Center, Stockbridge, Georgia. And I just wanted to put this up. I'm not going to talk long. It's not often I get to stand up here and have a thirty thousand square foot lot to tell you about. It's two-thirds of an acre in size and there's only nineteen of them, so it's a very small community. It is surrounded by other communities of the same size and nature. We understand the recommendations from staff and the planning commission and we do not have any objections to them. So I'll be glad to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you. You want else speaking in favor? Do we have anyone that wish to come and speak in opposition? Please state your name.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Jeff Davis. I live at 6175 Hearn, across the street from the proposed subdivision that's being proposed. I'm not necessarily in opposition. The last time we were here, it was a house being presented that did not represent the houses that's already there. Does the applicant still want to build the same house that he was considering building the last time we were here? We would hope. This is a picture of my house across the street from where he is, is proposing to build. And I would like for him to keep the homes looking kind of sort of the same way instead of looking like this, because that would really cut our values almost down to nothing if he come with a home like that. Now, I know the last time you all told me he had to do four sided brick. And I just would like to know if he's going to do the same homes that he was going to do the last time we were here.
I can, I can answer that. So considering that he is conditioned to do four sides brick, I believe that the homes that they presented last time had hardy plank elements on it. That's obviously not going to be the case once this is approved. It's going to be four sides brick.
I, I don't mean hardy plank and four sided brick. I mean the structure, the appearance of the home. The home that you presented last time, it was a smaller home, and it did not represent the homes that has been built in the neighborhood. And...
Is there a price point on the homes? Or any renderings of what's going to be built?
They haven't presented us any renderings, but I'd like to turn everyone's attention to condition number 10.
Okay.
Which reads each...
If you put, if you put condition 10 up there.
Condition number 10 reads that each permitted home in the development shall be compatible with existing homes as determined by planning and zoning department. The planning and zoning department is authorized to require the heated square footage to be increased and/or the architectural style to be modified in instances where incompatibility is determined. If it's up to planning and zoning, we're going to put the best product for the county forward. Does that answer your question, sir?
Kind of sort of. The last time, it was a different look of a home. And we asked, had anyone been out and seen the homes in our neighborhood? And I understand that...
Tell me what year that was, because I don't recall.
This was the last meeting that we attended. It was about a month or so ago.
Yeah, the zoning advisory board, yeah.
And he had, they had not been out to our neighborhood to see what kind of homes we had. They went off what was on the county records. So how can you build a house that's compatible with what's already there if you haven't been out and viewed what's already there? I'm not in opposition, I'm just saying, kind of keep us the same, so our property values will stay the same.
We're at 2,300 square feet.
2,300 square feet, four sides brick?
Four side brick, three car garages. So other than that, I mean, I don't, I don't know what else we can say. I can't, I don't think we can say.
Right. And so the thing we can do is go ahead and visit, go ahead and visit the site. Right. We'll go, we'll make sure it's compatible. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So Commissioner Holmes, did you have anything else that you'd like to add or you want to make a motion?
I'm totally satisfied with the conditions. Again, it's 2,300 square feet minimum, three car garage where feasible, we're all brick on all four sides. We have a beautiful gateway entering into the, the community. So I'm going to move to approve this new subdivision with all the conditions.
Okay. So we have a motion by Commissioner Holmes to approve with the conditions as read into the record and as he has stated. Can I get a second?
No, second.
Okay. So Commissioner Cannon, second it. If there's no further discussion, everyone in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay.
This says two car side entry garage standard where feasible, and I think Commissioner Holmes said it should be three car.
He said, he stated that into the record, yeah. Yes, ma'am. Okay.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So the last item we have is HR. Can I get Mr. Cooper to come forward? And resolution for approval and adoption of the Henry County Government Personnel Policy. Mr. Cooper.
Good evening, Madam Board, Chair, Distinguished Board Members. I want to thank you for this opportunity to come before you again to present the resolution to approve the Henry County Government Personnel Policy Manual. As you all know, we came before the Board September 8 to have this personnel manual adopted and approved. But over the last five months, I would like to share with you all the chronology of events that have transpired. June 8, we submitted an email to all employees, a draft of the Henry County Personnel Policy Manual. June 10, as well as June 24, we had multiple town hall meetings where employees were welcome to come in, share their concerns that they may have had regarding the policy manual. July 27, July 29, and September 7, we met with multiple board members to see if there were any concerns that you all may have had regarding the policy manual. And also, we followed up, September 27, with email communications to certain board members to see if there were any additional concerns that you may have had, or if we can, so that we can ensure that we captured all of those concerns. October 14, I sent a memorandum to each board member highlighting the concerns that Commissioner Tom has raised. And I kept the highlights illustrated per the instructions of Commissioner Holmes, because he wanted to keep the markups in there, so that we could review those markups. I also wrote our responses in italics. So I say that to say that we've tried to be completely transparent in this process. We wanted to be all inclusive, and we welcomed any issues or concerns anybody may have had with the policy, because at the end of the day, we wanted to be consistent. We want the principles and the guidelines to govern this organization in the best way possible. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Commissioner Thomas?
Commissioner Real, I have tried relentlessly to get to my notes and things. I cannot get on the internet at all. And he has said he has to take my computer with him to get it to work like it's supposed to. So I would just say, in lieu of that, you may just call for the vote.
Any other questions? I'd like to get a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Okay. Got a motion? We got a second. You know, we've been through this, and even if you can't get to your emails, you know, I know that I have it in my book here, all of the outlines and highlights and all of the changes that have been made. And if you're concerned about or have any issues, then it's always an opportunity to pick up the phone, talk to Mr. Cooper or anyone in HR. And just to continue to drag this out, I think is just shameful. But at any rate, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? All oppose? Motion fails.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mm-hmm. Thank you all for your work that you've done. Approval of the minutes, September 8, 2021, regular BOC meeting, September 21, 2021, regular BOC meeting. September 22, virtual workshop meeting, reference to transit master plan. Can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
Yes.
Okay. Second. Second from Commissioner Thomas. No discussion, all in favor? All oppose? Yes.
Is this the meeting being November 30 instead of December 7?
Ma'am, this is the approved minutes.
Minutes, okay.
Upcoming meeting and events, November 30, 2021, at 9:00 AM is a regular BOC meeting. Will be held as the December 1 meeting due to the holidays. December 14, regular BOC meeting is canceled. Meeting is adjourned.
Chair?
Yes.
Question? Is there another adjourned meeting?
That's questionable for me, because I'm not sure if I could be here due to the holidays. Okay. Okay.
Chair Real?
Yes.
I did a little bit of clarification on the emergency declaration that was read earlier this evening. I wanted to publicly clarify that this does not apply to public transportation, which includes the Henry County Transit and Senior Services buses and vans. There is still a federal mandate in place requiring masks to be worn, and that will not expire until January 18, 2022.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.